And our competitive value proposition. And so we're going to start by highlighting a little bit the importance of the regionalism and pulling together. Uh, in our work, airlines really do look to see how well a community functions. Uh, regionally, when they make investment decisions and they take note of the health of a region's municipal fabric. So the more unified we are in actions and approaches. The more the airlines have confidence in investing in developing routes in this market. The same can be said uh for developers more generally. Investing in growth in the Edmonton area, and that is an important part of our strategy to be competitive as we as we move forward. And we have a great story to tell. Because of our shared global ambitions aligned at the MRB. We've been able to make investments and land use decisions to bolster our position on the global stage. And with effect on the routes that and the connectivity of the airport to the to the world. The pandemic had a significant negative and long lasting impact on our air service offerings. We were down at one point. To a handful of destinations and not much more in terms of actual flights. And the region came together and invested in connectivity. James is going to talk a little bit about. The success that we've had in attracting critical air service routes to the market. When we brought forward our vision to unlock the potential of of the Yeg Land. We were supported by the region in decisions necessary and by the province. To support decisions necessary to grow our real estate footprint and improve highway access to the airport. And this has unlocked significant private investment over the last several years. In diverse economic growth, and this could not have been done without the collaborative approach and pulling together. With that, um. In twenty twenty-three, as you see on this slide. We served seven and a half million passengers, a twenty-eight percent increase over twenty twenty-three. And a ninety-two percent recovery from the pre-pandemic numbers of twenty nineteen. And so far in twenty twenty-four, despite challenges. With a number of airlines in terms of air aircraft availability and the. Impact of hail in Calgary on WestJet and so on and pilots. And labor disruptions in both of our major uh carriers. Uh, we're sitting at ninety-four percent pre-pandemic recovery rate. We'd served eight point one five million passengers and we're looking forward to going past that. Uh, as quickly as we possible can possibly can. The total economic impact, as you see on the slide, now sits at around four point nine billion dollars, up from three point two billion. In twenty eighteen, there has been explosive growth and we support more than twenty-one thousand jobs in the region. Uh, at both, including both airports. Those. Jobs and the teams at Y E G are focused on five primary priority areas. It's gonna dance again. You got it? Okay, thanks. Uh, the first is to retain and grow passengers and cargo. The second. To grow non-aeronautical revenues, an example of which. Are the lease revenues we receive in various of the properties that are developed at the airport. That's that's critical because it reduces the cost to the airlines to fly here. And at the end of the day, if our core mission is. Connecting the region to the world and our secondary mission is enhancing economic development of the region. To support those both together, we need non-aeronautical revenues to be competitive. Because we are not a hub for any of the airlines. Third is to create an exceptional.
That's your timer. I'm assuming you were told five minutes, but because there's three of you, we'll obviously go on. Yeah.
The third is to create an exceptional passenger experience, building on this strong foundation of operational excellence. And last. The fourth is uh to create positive impact through sustainability. And last. Is to ensure the airport organization is investing in its talent. So uh with the time limits that you've got, at this point, I wanted to turn over to James. Just to very quickly perhaps pull up the slides and then move. Move past them, but it is important that you understand what we're working on. So, James?
Sure. Don't rush, James. Just take your time.
Appreciate it. Thanks very much. So I'll provide a quick little uh overview of uh the air service as well as some other parts of our business. Um, but uh WestJet is our largest carrier by volume. They represent fifty percent of our market share. And they made the largest investment they've ever invested in Edmonton last year and now have service to Atlanta and Minneapolis. I hope you all know as well that Edmonton is served by K L M direct to Amsterdam and we increased that service to five times a week this coming winter. Which is fantastic. At one point, that flight was in danger, and so it's celebrating uh ten years in the spring, which is fantastic. We've also nearly doubled the capacity of our service to Denver on United, which positions us well for. Uh, future service on the uh United network. Uh, Porter is flying to Montreal, Toronto and Ottawa, which is fantastic as they expand west. And we're supported by our German friends at Condor to Frankfurt twice a week. In the summer months, and we're hoping to continue to increase that. Obviously, our friends in Air Canada represent about a quarter of our market share and uh they continue. Uh, to be a very important partner. And obviously, we have our low-cost carrier Flare based in Edmonton, which is very exciting. Um. Okay, so there's a couple of dots missing on this map. Long story short, so our priority is to get. Back up and above our twenty nineteen numbers. Uh, well, as what Carmen said, we'll hit ninety-four percent this year. Uh, but you can see uh maybe Houston's missing, Chicago, New York, and then London, England would be our priorities. Uh, at the end of the day, uh, what matters is the data and uh airlines. Can see everything, and so it's really important that we support our region's air service by doing three things. Fly, don't drive if you can, fly direct if you can, and if you have the means, flying business. Also, if uh there there are other economics that go into a flight, but using the cargo capacity, which I'll get to in a second. Uh, so as Carmen also mentioned, um. We had the opportunity to uh develop a regional air service opportunity fund with regional municipalities that assembled fifteen million dollars. Uh, to fund the recovery of our air service. And so. Uh, we are happy to have funded six different routes as well as airside infrastructure that facilitated more cargo uh business. And we were able to recover to ninety-two percent, but we're not done yet. We're not fully recovered. Other hub airports in the country. Have uh exceeded their pre-pandemic numbers, although our recovery has been bolstered by this investment and um. Uh, exceeds other mid-sized airports in the country. We're still not done. And so we have an ask into the provincial government. Uh, to recapitalize our RASAF funds. So uh maybe at a later date, we can discuss how you can support that um as well, which would be much appreciated. On the cargo side of our business, um, it continues to be extremely important. Cargo was the one part of our business that benefited from COVID because everybody had to ship not only P P and E, but they were. Racking up uh, you know, the Amazon bill, getting deliveries. That business is starting to normalize. And so you'll see. Some negative red numbers. That's normal because the cargo volume was quite uh uh substantial over COVID. Uh, and now um, you know, we're we're just focused on sustaining growth moving forward. Uh, one big highlight that I'd like to bring to your attention, Buffalo flying five times a week on a freighter to the north. That is. A major impact, not just from a commercial perspective, about flying goods. Uh, both perishable and uh consumer goods to the north, but it also unlocks the potential. Of the export market for indigenous communities up north. So it's a great service to our northern communities. Uh. So uh quickly on our sustainability campus, um. Long story short, Edmonton is a living lab for innovation. We have all sorts of stuff happening on campus that is not only. Uh, air service and development, but uh innovation and incubation. And so um. That culminated in us working with the federal government to receive up to a hundred million dollars. Uh, to expand or develop the international cargo hub. And um this will unlock approximately two thousand acres of land on the south campus. Uh, and be able to really leverage our unique circumpolar uh position globally. Um. We've also invested in uh the uh additional aprons, hydrogen fueling and a variety of other. Uh, exciting topics. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Margot to give you a quick update on our sustainability initiatives.
Thank you, James. We will be quick, we promise. Uh, our sustainability practices at Y E G are a competitive differentiator for our region as a whole, and we just hope that you're excited about this as we are. Uh, when the ground freezes this fall or into the winter, we're hoping that our airport city solar begins construction. This is by far the largest solar farm at any international airport that we're aware of. Although there's no award uh selection nominee for that. Uh, we also brought on hydrogen fuel cell electric vehicles in this last year. Um, we are uh. Becoming a use case for hydrogen fuel in the region and uh we want to partner with more municipalities on getting that fleet deployed and getting hydrogen fueling. In different parts around the city. So we would love to talk to your teams uh about that. Uh, we signed two MOUs on sustainable aviation fuel with regional sustainable aviation fuel producers. Sorry, that was a helpful. Um, when we're excited to see how we can incent SAF and biofuels development in the region to complement our strengths in traditional energy development. We um have a very exciting partnership with Montana First Nation. It's the first major partnership with a. First Nation community for our airport, and we recently just announced uh our drone delivery Canada partnership with them. Delivering time-sensitive materials from the airport in a controlled airspace to a medical clinic owned by Montana First Nation in Laduke. So it is a very exciting. Uh, opportunity to decarbonize first and last mile of delivery. Uh, and then at at the COP twenty-eight last year in Dubai. We signed a green shipping corridors MOU with a number of countries, uh including Japan, South Korea, um and India, uh looking to create. Clean shipping corridors where we can capitalize on that opportunity as a logistics hub in Edmonton. Um, and Carmen will have more to say about this, so I'll be very quick. Sustainable aviation fuel is a huge opportunity for the Edmonton region. We have the energy know-how and the prowess to really jump on this opportunity. And if we don't jump on this opportunity soon, somebody else is going to beat us to it. So we supply a lot. The Edmonton region, of course, supplies a lot of. Regular jet fuel to major airports across Canada. If we can become really good and really economic at making the biofuel complement to it. We will continue to enshrine our leadership in that uh sector. So we're working currently with uh municipalities all across the northeast to say. How can we uh become better informed about this opportunity and really jump on this one together? Uh, and with that, I'll go right back over. James?
Yeah, just quickly to um finish up on Villeneuve Airport. Uh, it's a very strategic asset for the region, uh obviously close to home for you all here. Um, home to twenty-five businesses, uh generates roughly seventy-five million dollars in economic activity year and supports three hundred jobs. Um, over the last few years, we've been investing heavily in underground and um uh variety of horizontal infrastructure. I don't need to tell you that while critically important, it doesn't necessarily get the attention that it deserves. And so now, having done a lot of that work along with our strategic plan, uh having been confirmed, uh we can start to to move forward with activating and focusing more on Villeneuve. Um, up into including just in the process of hiring a new general manager who will oversee the the venue and embed themselves in the community, which is really exciting. Uh, and then finally for me, uh a couple of things I just want to leave you with, uh. Air service development, or this is something I always like to say, air service development is the spark to the economic development flame. When your economic development teams are working nationally, uh transborder or internationally, trying to attract capital to the region. It might not be the first question that they're asked, but one of the top questions is how easy is it to get there? And it is a fantastic um win when we can say extremely easy because we've got direct service. We would love to uh host you and have you invest your capital in the region. So. Long story short, that only works when we communicate, communicate regularly and often and uh openly. So. That's why we're here today, and I really appreciate you taking the time. And I think we're going to close out with Carmen talking a little bit about our uh community investment.
This is really just an ask. Uh, it it's part of our engagement strategy across the region is to support each municipality. As best we can. Uh, we are a strategic asset in the in the entire region. We believe that we can help and we do help in lots of ways, including the Gulf Classic fundraiser and ability to do that. Uh, but we have uh a specific ask, how can we increase? Our community impact within the city of St. Albert and help you and your community uh understand better what we do uh globally. So thank you very much. Thank you for being a little lenient on the time. Uh, it's a big story to tell. Uh, and the the very last thing I'm going to say is hydrogen is actually a strategic disruptor. That if we can activate and bring that into the aviation fuel sector, uh we can disrupt global travel. In a way that is hugely positive to the region. We're really passionate about this. We're investing a lot of time and effort into building it. And I, if you hear about anything to do with accelerating the region's progress on hydrogen. We're we're not moving fast enough. We need, we need to move faster. So anything you can do to help us on that file would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you all three of you um for coming and giving this presentation. Have we had EIA come and present before? I don't, not, not like this. For sure, definitely. I guess um. I should tease Joan because she, her and I are good friends and she never showed up here, but Carmen, you did. Thank you for that. I would love to get a picture someday. Uh, questions from my council. Council Jolly, you good? Oh, Council Hughes, you go on first. Go ahead.
Sure, I'll, I'm thinking it'll be brief. So in the past, you know, we, there's that fifty million dollar pot that you asked for from the municipalities. You're not asking for that again, but when I looked at one of the slides, you were saying you wanted us to support the province, give you more money. Is that clear? Is that what you?
So no air opportunities fund, just advocacy to the province?
Correct, correct. We're gonna, we're trying to recapitalize RASAF, but we're doing it going to the province as part of the balancing between Edmonton and Calgary in part.
Sure.
So.
So is there, are you looking for, I guess, what are you looking at for us to do for advocacy in our part?
That's a good question. I'll leave, turn that over to Margot and James.
Perfect. So we've just introduced that budget ask into the appropriate ministers. Uh, we know that the budget deliberations then will be ongoing for this week and the next few before it really starts to get tied down uh at the year ends. Uh, so we're just asking for any opportunities that you're seeing uh regional MLAs or seeing any of the ministers. Accountable for the transportation, tourism and sport files or the jobs economy and trade files to mention to them what you're hearing from your community. Uh, which we know is that people want more non-stop air service from Edmonton, not only for pleasure, but for the sake of their businesses as well. Um, so we could come forward with a template letter if that's something that you would prefer, just to have something that you can kind of, some key messages to sign off on, but more so, we're looking for. Your application on this ask in support of it to your colleagues in the province.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Okay, Council Kilik.
Uh, thank you for the presentation, and I personally just want to say I'm looking forward to the completion of the departures ramp. Um, question for you. So uh recovery of um. Your, your traffic levels and cargo levels both pre-pandemic. You said you're close, the ninety-five percent or something like that. Um. So the rest of the market has actually grown. Uh, larger than pre-pandemic. So what, what is the gap? If we get another five percent to close pandemic levels, but. National levels have already grown another ten. Are we, are we close and or? What kind of steps can we take to, to really get up, up to the national level?
Okay, I'm gonna take a stab at this, and James is gonna correct me if I get it wrong. Uh, first of all, on the ramp, I can tell you that the plan is to open the ramp either October thirtieth or thirty-first, which will be ahead of schedule and under budget. Uh, so the team has has delivered a project that was incredibly complex. Because I don't think people realize that ramp is actually the ceiling over the Tim Hortons. Uh, so that was not a simple project to undertake. Uh, on the, on the recovery. I would say uh. We're impacted by a number of factors. Uh, outside of our control and some within, but the two main ones. Are that the major carriers have retrenched to their hubs. Because they are under their own financial and 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 pressures coming out of, out of the pandemic. They. Uh, the pandemic was very hard on the industry as a whole, so that they reverted to their hub strategy and. WestJet in particular has been very supportive and and announced historic levels of increase. But not to the levels that we were at before the pandemic, to be honest. And that's affected by the fact that they do not have the pilots or the aircraft to support the regional care, regional routes that ran out of Edmonton traditionally. To the north, to Grand Prairie, Yalnay, uh. Port McMurray in particular, but generally. Travel outside of Edmonton and Calgary in the province is really restricted. And we're impacted disproportionately by that. I suspect that a large portion of our five percent loss is directly related to those routes. And it, and they will not recover until the airlines have the aircraft and the pilots to support them. Have I got that right, James?
Yeah, absolutely. So uh we're forecasting ninety-four percent this year, so we've got six percent to go. Montreal, Toronto and Vancouver have exceeded their pre-pandemic numbers because they're hubs. Uh, we have not, although we are the closest among the other tier-two airports in the country. The other part that I would add. Um, is. Uh, that Air Canada, uh, WestJet has been extraordinarily helpful, um, while. Dealing with some of their own issues with the union renegotiations as well as the hailstorm in Calgary. And so that has contributed to a bit of a plateau with our scale. The scale is just passenger volume dollar, uh, volume, not dollars, just to be clear also. Um, and so uh I think between my comments and Carmen's, it gives you a pretty good understanding that uh we have a, a long way to go, and although it's only six percent. It's a big six percent, and we've got to work really hard to get there.
I did have a secondary question around the importance of hydrogen. Um, we know that there's hydrogen vehicles, hydrogen refueling. You had, I believe, mentioned hydrogen as an aviation. Fuel, or did I?
No, you you understood that correctly. The end, the use of hydrogen to create sustainable aviation fuel by putting blue hydrogen in our case. Uh, as opposed to ethanol in the biofuel uh components that they're adding to jet fuel. Is an opportunity that we believe is disruptive. This region is uniquely positioned. To have almost limitless amounts of sustainable blue hydrogen available. And one of the highest. Value uses of that hydrogen is going to be in sustainable aviation fuel. And as the airport located right at the center of the energy. Uh, when I'm, when I'm overseas talking for the airport, I say we have three competitive advantages in Edmonton. One is geography. Nobody can take away our position in North America and on the globe. Great circle routes and road and rail connections to the coast. Second is our land, landmass. Uh, for whatever reason, the Fed set it, set us up with a lot of, lot of land in our control. That allows us to, for example, operate twenty-four seven. That's a competitive advantage. And the third is we're located the closest of any major airport in Canada to the source of the energy necessary to run the industry. So we believe that if we can get high-volume, high-quality hydrogen into the aviation fuel chain. We can disrupt places like Anchorage, for example. That's a goal.
And, and I would say I had a tour of uh. Of EIA the last year, and it was awesome when you actually see your landmass and all the other associated businesses with that. Um, it, it, you can see it's more than an airport. It's a industrial uh commercial hub. So it was a, an eye-opening. Uh, tour for sure.
Well, and in addition to the opening of the ramp, there's going to be other good news in the coming weeks and months. There's going to be some bumps. The, the route issue is a major, major issue for us as we go. So there's always going to be bumps and wins and losses. But there's some really good news coming. So.
The tours that you give are pretty valuable. Mike and I went, we saw the drones. They didn't fly, did they? That day? No, I don't think they didn't take off, but they're cool. Council Broadhead has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and and thanks for your presentation today. Uh. I, exciting stuff at the AIA to be sure. Uh, our closest airport is Villeneuve. Uh. It's a, I don't know, you would call it a regional uh general aviation. What are the low-hanging fruits for development around Villeneuve that you see into the future?
I'm going to set the table and then pass it off to James for the, for the detail. Villeneuve is strategic, both for what it brings and what it allows us to not do at the international airport itself. So flight, the, the idea of the flight training center being at Villeneuve is, is actually strategic. It allows both airports to to operate better. Uh, we can do more there, uh, and the industry needs us to do more there. So I would say there's an opportunity there. Uh, there are other opportunities related to, to the, to drones. Uh, is another one. Uh, and there are probably some others. What is important to understand, though, is that Villeneuve is not built, designed. Or, or intended to replace. I, uh, the other aspects that are better suited at the international airport. Uh, the runways can't take the larger aircraft. Uh, you know, there's just limitations on it. So we've got to be careful about what it is and what it isn't. So, James, over to you.
Like he's done this before. Uh. As Carmen mentioned, um, AV, or sorry, it's a general aviation airport, and so we have opportunities with flight school. That's number one by a long shot. Uh, we were just hosting a Japanese uh flight school operator. We've got a lot of opportunity uh to expand that service and align with post-secondary institutions to really leverage the asset. Because that's what it is. It's an asset. Uh, second to that is autonomous uh work. So drones, basically. Um, we've been able to uh craft the regulatory framework such that we can start to fly beyond visual line of sight. Which opens things up to taking things on the road uh a little bit farther afield as the technology also grows. So. Really exciting work there. I think those are the two key differentiators. Uh, and as well as leveraging the land and accessible connectivity from a regional perspective. So you've got rail right there. You've got regional highway access. There can also be a really, really great opportunity to focus on the uh aerospace and uh development. So. Maintenance and and that kind of thing. So uh, like I said earlier, it took us a few years to, to get organized and invest in the infrastructure. And now that we've done that and both invested in our strategic plan, uh, we can start to focus more on uh growth of that building.
Is there, is there a marriage perhaps with agribusiness and and aviation? I. You know, you hear of crop dusting. Uh, we don't see a lot of that around here. Uh, I, I may be mistaken. I don't know. I've only ever seen one. But my question is, is it, is, is there a systemic or a, a barrier to that kind of activity going on around Villeneuve? Or is it?
I don't think there's a barrier. I think there has been uh. A lack of strategic approach in the, in the agri industry itself to get, get, so that it's hard to find the, the partners. Uh, I would say we are absolutely open to that. The, the international airport, actually, the movement of. Uh, improved and upgraded agricultural products through the airport is a much more impactful uh piece of that cargo. Uh, picture than you might realize. Uh, we move a lot, we move a lot of agricultural products, that, things that have to move quickly, uh typically. Uh, both inbound and outbound. Uh, so that's, that's true. And the one other piece that I want to, want to mention is. Coming out of the discussions around flight train, so there's pilot training essentially, has been the focus up until now. The partnership with post-secundaries is actually as another strategic part that is changing. With the closure of the airport, the municipal airport and the move away of companies like Spar. Our region doesn't actually have the training capacity for the maintainers and the technicians and all the rest of that. So the partnership that James referred to with post-secundaries is strategic. We're putting a lot of effort into building that partnership to build programs. So that we can train people here to build the, the ecosystem. Part of that includes Villeneuve, horseshoe. And so it's more than just pilot training.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. Appreciated your presentation, by the way. Thanks.
You can tell we get excited about it.
Uh, yes.
Council Mackay has a question.
Well, we'll see if the excitement continues. Um, so it, and part of the problem is, is if you wouldn't carry so much luggage, they wouldn't have had to fix the silly departure ramp in the first place. The um, kind of the question I have, and it relates to your last slide, and it was around, you know, we know our community best. What can we advise you? So how tied into the local economic development offices are you, or is it all through Edmonton Global?
Um, that's another really good question. I would say. And I'll, I'll take a stab at it again, and then I'm going to turn it back to James or Margot to, to correct me if I, if I misstate anything. We have a key relationship with Global. And the reason for that is that Global's mission is at the other end of the routes that we're trying to build or already have. And support. And so they, they complement our work in developing those routes and our route development complements what they're trying to do in terms of attraction. Uh, to the region as a whole. And from the days that the task force was created by the metro mayors, including uh the mayor of this council at the time. Uh, that led to Edmonton Global, that above the line, what I would call above-the-line work, we. Uh, that led to Edmonton Global, that above the line, what I would call above the line work, we used to describe it uh, on the task force. That above the line work belongs properly at that global level. But there is a lot that happens that is local in impact and nature and frankly. We're here because we have, we have determined that it is strategic. For us to better understand what's happening in the local areas within the region and not to look at everybody out of the same basket. And so at a board level, we think it's important. We're investing time at a, at a senior leadership level. We think it's important. So we're learning. But right now, I would say most of our, most of our direct effort has been with, with global. James?
Yeah, the only thing I would add, um, and I don't mean to throw myself under the bus, but I'm also new to the role. And so I think moving forward, it's really important that, uh, given the nature of my role, that I get out into all of the communities and start to understand the deal flow and what's going on. Maybe a bit tactical, but important is we recently launched a uh, business survey because without going into too much detail. The airlines can see the data and who's flying where we supply to them in our business cases, but they really struggle with the incremental growth. So let's say your team is about to land a really big deal that would facilitate more traffic between Edmonton and another destination. That's really, really important for us to know because it could push a deal over the line and get us direct area access. So for us, this is a first step, or for me specifically, this is a first step to come out, to get to know you, put a face to the name. And hopefully continue to dialogue moving forward and we're much closer with the entire organization.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of value in getting to know. I mean, you've asked a question and I think. I mean, our economic development knows what they're working on, how they tie into Edmonton Global. So there is already that connection. But I think that's an opportunity to maybe answer your question a little bit. The other part is, and maybe ju, it's just more of a comment and, and you're saying. How we're tied to hydrogen. And I just wanna make sure that you're aware that our wastewater commission is actually. Part of our thirteen municipalities around the uh, kind of Edmonton area, but there's thirteen municipalities that make up our wastewater commission. And we're in, right now, providing water reuse to Air Products new plants. So we are. Kind of doing a little bit of our part in relation to hydrogen and all that. So that was a big, big, big kind of connection too. So there's an opportunity.
Fantastic. That's great to know. Appreciate it.
Chair of the Wastewater Commission.
Sorry.
Counselor Bermansky.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for present, presenting to us today. I just have one quick question. You had mentioned that it would be increased medical um, service. I think you mentioned with the Villeneuve Airport. It was just a quick little bite in there. Can you elaborate, please?
Yeah, so the, it's an alternative landing destination for Alberta Health Services. So when uh, it happened this spring, I believe. Uh, weather incident at Edmonton International and the medical services get rerouted to Villeneuve. It worked flawlessly uh, and a fantastic partnership. So we already have a baseline that we can build off of from there, which is great.
So it's just a backup plan, an emergency plan?
Effectively, yes.
At this point, okay. Thank you.
Just for fixed wing.
Correct.
Fixed wing medevac kind of stuff.
Thank you.
I see no more questions. Mine were all kind of touched on through my counselor. So thank you for that, counsel. Natalie, you're good? Thank you for coming. This was really um, informative and let's try to do this at least once a year.
But yeah, thank you. It is our intention to continue this every, every year on a, on a cycle. It takes a little while to get, get through all thirteen councils. But uh, it's, but, but it's important. So.
Yeah, and of course.
Thank you.
October of twenty-five, you're gonna have new faces sitting across the regions. So um. I think it's highly recommended that you do the tours again that Mike and I participated on. That was really good. Yeah.
We'll make, we'll make a particular note about the, about the turnover and the scheduling of tours.
Okay, perfect.
You're right. That, that will be very good timing from our perspective. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great meeting.
Okay, before I go to the library, just give me one second. I know we've got KPMG online. Mister Jacobs, are you okay waiting another maybe ten minutes? Cause we have one more presentation. I know you were timed specific. But.
That is fine.
You sure? Okay, thank you, Sheldon. I will uh, get to you as soon as I can. So we have a, a nice. Um, exciting presentation from the Library Board of Trustees. So I registered, I have Peter Bailey to speak, but also Sherry Love. So. All of you, some of you, whoever's coming down. And you had shared your presentation with us earlier.
Mayor, I'm just loading it for them now.
Perfect, thanks. Saw a bunch of pictures of Wes, Council Broadhead having TM Bannock in the presentation. That's a great picture right there. All right, start whenever you guys are ready.
Good afternoon. I'm Sherry Love. I'm a Library Board Trustee and I'm here today with the St. Albert Public uh, Library CEO, Peter Bailey. Which I think you're all familiar with. We are also joined by the St. Albert Sturgeon County. Mayte Local President Rev Darba, Darba. I know I was gonna do that. And member Phyllis Kelly. So we thank you for this opportunity to share some tremendous news. We are excited to announce the City of St. Albert Library. Board is the twenty twenty-four winner of the Minister's Award for Municipal and, and Public Library Excellence. First Community Tea and Bannock Initiative. This award was granted by the Minister of Municipal Pairs. The Honorable Rick McGyver. This award recognizes excellence and innovation in a public library service delivery winning initiatives. Needed to demonstrate responsiveness to community needs and provide direct benefit to the public. St. Albert won in the over ten thousand population category, which had brought us in competition and in company of the city of Edmonton. City of Calgary and other large municipalities. We're pretty proud of that. Though this award and this program's success was only possible with the support and a partnership with our local media association. So we, we definitely appreciate them. I'm going to now turn over the presentation to Peter Bailey to provide further information about this initiative and the award.
So Community TM Bannock is a monthly drop-in gathering inviting. All community members, indigenous and non-indigenous, to come together and connect over TM Bannock. The purposefully informal series creates easy opportunities for people to come together, make new friends. Share stories over traditional indigenous refreshments in a welcoming, inclusive atmosphere. It takes place in the inviting open spaces of the library's community living room and is hosted by the library. Again, in partnership with the St. Albert Sturgeon County Mayte Local nineteen oh four. We received the award last Tuesday when representatives from the government of Alberta's. Municipal Affairs Ministry, Public Library Services Branch, joined us for Community TM Bannock. On the same morning when we were uh, when the Mayte Local was unveiling the Every Child Matters Crosswalk. So for us, it was a really successful day with more than a hundred fifty people in attendance. The Community TM Bannock program aligns with our, our newish uh, strategic plan and our priority to. Of community engagement. Our goal is that all community members will feel a sense of belonging to their community. With the support of library services, programs, collections, spaces, and staff. Our new community living room on the main floor of downtown here has facilitated larger grassroots gatherings of community members. As well as more formal meetings of community organizations. The program also aligns with Sapples' strategic priority to pursue truth and reconciliation. And the library's goal of having indigenous community members feel a sense of belonging at their library. It's been wonderful to welcome so many indigenous elders, in particular, to the library as part of TM Bannock. Many of them have never been to the library before. Uh, just last week, Elder Hazel McKennett, who bravely shared her experience at residential school at last week's. Crosswalk unveiling, she signed up for a library card at TM Bannock. It's also been fantastic to see Mayor Heron and a, a number of city councillors join us for TM Bannock. I, I know it's on uh, council meeting day, so it's always a, a difficult thing. While it may appear simple on the surface, the TM Bannock initiative is the culmination of many years of relationship building. And significant community consultation. Past programming and events under the banner of cultivating reconciliation at the library include. Indigenous author events at our, our Starfest Literary Festival. Indigenous film watch parties. We hosted the University of Alberta's Indigenous Canada Online Course several times. Mayte Jigging Classes, we're excited to offer in twenty twenty-three, again in partnership. Our outreach team is always on site for National Indigenous People's Day and National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. Dr. Shurit.
The TM Bannock program also aligns with the city's strategic priority of vibrant downtown. More than six hundred eighty-five people have attended the TM Bannock initiative since it launched in January of twenty twenty-four. Which is an average of seventy-six new uh, people in attendees in St. Albert's Downtown Core. The, the program further aligns with the City of St. Albert's strategic party of increasing our community's wellbeing. This initiative works to accommodate the diverse needs of all our residents, residents. And foster an inclusive community where everyone feels welcome and has an opportunity to fully participate. The library also proudly sent out a media release and our good news was picked up both by the, by CTV Edmonton. And the St. Albert Gazette. So we would just wanna thank you, the city council and the city employees for your ongoing support of the library collection programs. And services. We believe together we can work to improve the quality of life uh, for our diverse St. Albert community. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming. Um, I just want you to know that not only the Gazette and CTV, it was actually announced by Minister McGyver. When we were in Red Deer, he was on the stage and he announced the, all, all the award winners, but St. Albert was up there. So that made us all in attendance feel very proud. So that was great. Um. The only other thing I would add is it's just been a really good week in St. Albert, honestly. Uh, I felt a little bad that we couldn't be more public about the award for the library during the crosswalk. But I kinda get that we wanted to just make sure the crosswalk be the center of attention and that was a great day. Um, TM Panic was great. Yesterday was great for National Indigenous People's Day. So it's just, that's all. I have no questions, other than it's been a great week. Super proud to be the mayor of this community right now. But I will open it up to anyone else who has any questions. Wes would like to know if you have any Bannock with you? Okay, good.
Well, thank you, Madam, and thanks and congratulations. Uh, thanks for coming today and giving a presentation, but. Certainly, congratulations for your efforts and uh, yeah, it's a great event. Uh, I've been there a couple of times. I know others have been as well. So I'm not the only one that's been there. The Bannock is really good. Have to avoid ta, eating too much of it, but nonetheless, uh, and just to see the uh, the vibrancy of people in, in that room. And just the, the, the sense of community that comes out of that event. Uh, it's really well done and you deserve the win. Congratulations.
Anyone else have any comments? Nope. Just congratulations from, from all around. Thank you for waiting to. Okay, we are a bit behind schedule because we had a one fifteen time specific. So if everybody wants to get ready to talk about um. Our external audit financial plan, we will get KPMG um, to present. I've got Mister Jacobs' partner um, ready. And Mister Jacobs, do you have anyone else with you?
Yes, I do have one of my colleagues with me, Brittany Kealan.
Excellent. I will let you start whenever you're ready.
Good. Well, thank you. Good afternoon. It's our pleasure to walk council through our audit planning report slide deck for fiscal twenty twenty-four. Uh, since you've had an opportunity to um, uh, or the planning report was in advance, provided to you in advance in your council package. What we'll do is we'll just touch on the high points as we go through the document. And then if you have any questions. Uh, please feel free to uh, ask those as we go through the document or at the end of our um, presentation. So moving to uh, the next slide is mentioned, my colleague Brittany is with me and we're going to uh, just give you up the presentation here. And moving on to the next slide. Uh, okay, our audit highlights. So basically, um, for the most part, the scope of our audit plan for fiscal twenty twenty-four. Is very similar to last year. There is one change which I'll touch, touch base on. Um, the key components of the work that we'll be doing is auditing the consolidated financial statements of the city. We also audit the financial statements of the library board, audit the municipal financial information return, which is uh, submitted to Alberta Municipal Affairs. We uh, audit the program reporting for the FCSS program and then. Uh, every three years, and this will be a year where this will be applicable, is we do perfor, perform. Certain audit procedures on the local authorities pension plan for reporting um, the activities under that plan. So that's an area where every three years is a bit more effort that's expended. Um, for the most part, like I say, the scope of our uh, audit activities are very similar to prior periods. Uh, in terms of our audit strategy and the other items on this slide, we'll just touch on as we go through the documents. So if we advance the next slide. So we always like to uh, do a comparison of our audit approach from one year to the next, just to give you a, a sense for whether is any change in focus. Uh, this year, a few areas that we'll speak to briefly here is that. There are some new accounting standards that impact municipalities right across the country. Uh, we've listed those there, public-private partnerships, revenues, and intangibles. Administration is currently going through and assessing what impacts, if any. Uh, those new accounting standards will have on financial reporting for fiscal twenty twenty-four and going forward. Um, once we review those um. Once we review that analysis with uh, with administration, we'll have a, a better assessment in terms of what the impact might be on our audit. If there is any impact. Uh, but we will incorporate any changes necessary as a result of those new accounting standards. Into our audit plan as we move forward. From an auditing perspective, there are auditing standards that we have to adhere to every year. For the most part, there isn't any significant changes this year. There was one standard with, that relates to what we call group audits. And the city's financial statements is actually a group audit because it is combined of not only the accounts of the city. But it also includes the Arts and Heritage Foundation and also the Library Board. Um, there'll be a little bit of incremental work that we need to do on our end, but nothing that's substantive or that will impact. The financial reporting for the city, but just wanted to mention to you that we do incorporate any auditing requirements or any changes to standards in the work that we do. Um, as we go through the audit for fiscal twenty twenty-four, if there's been any updates to any of the observations we made and reported to council. At the end of our audit at the end of twenty twenty-three, we will do an update on those observations. Uh, with administration during the course of our audit. And then when we report to council at the end of fiscal twenty twenty-four. We'll provide an update to any of the recommendations or observations that have been previously uh, provided to council and administration in the past. And as I mentioned, we will be doing some incremental work this year in respect of uh, the local authorities pension plan activities. So with that, uh, the other elements of our audit plan, which we'll touch on here in our presentation, will be handled by Brittany.
Great. Thank you very much. So first thing I'll speak to is materiality. And as some of you might be aware, our audit is designed to detect errors in the financial statements that are considered material. Which means that if they were left unadjusted, the error could impact the decisions of the users of the financial statements. So this is an amount that guides and gives us direction in terms of the work that we will perform. It doesn't mean that we only look at transactions larger than this amount. Uh, we will examine on a test basis, both large and small transactions. And we determined initial materiality based on an estimate of total expenses for the year, based on the city's twenty twenty-four budget. And that's resulted in a materiality of seven million, slightly higher than last year as a result of higher projected expenditures. If any errors are identified that are greater than three hundred and fifty thousand, those would all be reported to council. Um, so not this materiality number. Group audit scoping. So as previously mentioned by Sheldon, um, there was a change to the group auditing standard this year. And this slide outlines our scoping deci, decisions with respect to the consolidated financial statements. So you can see the resulting percentage of total assets and total revenues that will be subject to audit procedures. which are quite high. So we will achieve a high degree of coverage of approximately ninety-eight percent of each of these metrics. And the untested amounts here relate to the library as well as the Arts and Heritage Foundation and some accounts within the city for which we have determined the risk of error is remote. This is consistent with previous years and as required by auditing standards, all audits are associated with a significant risk related to the management override of controls. So we'll primarily address this through testing journal entries as well as evaluating estimates and any significant unusual transactions that may have occurred. We have a slide here that are required inquiries of council. So every year we circulate a questionnaire to the council members that deal with the items that are on this slide. So it's been included to give council a heads up, make everyone familiar with the inquiries, but we'll ask these formally at a later date. So you can expect this questionnaire to come during our year-end fieldwork. All right, and timeline. So we've agreed on this timing with administration and we'll start doing some work in the fall fairly shortly here and complete our year-end procedures in March. We plan to present our audit findings to council on April fifteenth, so we've set this timeline to follow in order to meet that deadline. And with that, I will hand it back to Sheldon to close us off.
Yeah, that formally kind of goes through the key elements of our audit plan for fiscal two thousand and twenty-four. There are three appendices here, which in the essence of time, we don't plan to go through in any any detail unless there's any questions. We're very appreciative of the opportunity to work with the city as your external auditor and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on our audit plan.
Thank you, guys. Generally, we're pretty quick, but I already have two councillors lined up to ask questions. So councillor Broadhead, you're first up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Slide ten, required inquiries of council. I've signed off on this a number of years in a row now and feel good about how I respond. But in an organization this size, there's a lot of unique large transactions and yet council concerned about unusual react. How would you characterize unusual in the context where there are a lot of unique purchases in in a city this size? What the trigger for us?
Yeah, you know, it really depends on. It's a good question. When we approach an audit, we have the collective benefit of doing many municipalities right across the country. And that gives us a good understanding of the potential transactions that we should typically see in a municipality. And you're right, there's there's a lot of different transactions with a lot of different parties. But that also gives us an opportunity to look at and look for transactions that just might not make sense in the context of municipal operations. So there's one, which is the nature of the transaction. Secondly, we look at size of transactions, you know, are there transactions that are of a size or of a volume that doesn't make sense? Again, that would be inconsistent with the nature of the operations of the municipality. The amounts that are recorded and where they are recorded in financial statements or in the underlying accounting records. So we use some computer assisted audit techniques where we have the ability to run routines on data to see whether or not transactions that are posted are actually posted to the accounts that we would expect them to be accounted posted to. So when we look at it from a fraud or misappropriation perspective, we look at the opportunities for there to be an error in the financial results or opportunities for there to be misrepresentation in the financial results. And we look for information from various different sources. So nature, the type of transactions, the extent of transactions and where they've been posted in the records to give us a sense for whether or not there is a heightened awareness that we should have with respect to specific transactions. And then those specific transactions, if they do exist, we will identify them and then apply specific audit procedures on them. So again, it's really goes back to understanding the operations of the municipality, understanding municipalities just as a whole and municipal accounting and looking for and seeking for those transactions that really don't make sense in the context of the nature of your business.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm sure I'll sign it off the way I did in previous time, simply because of the confidence I have in in our reporting schedules and in fact, in the work that you guys do. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. There was two. Who was it? Was it you, councillor? You're good? Okay. Same question. All right. Yeah, I have no questions. I was curious about significant risks. But you explained it very well in your presentation, so I'm not really worried about it anymore. So I see no more questions. Do we have a we have a motion on this one, don't we? Yeah. Councillor Keelik, I'll let you make the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That the two thousand and twenty-four audit plan prepared by KPMG provided as an attachment to the October one, two thousand and twenty-four agenda report titled Audit Planning Report for the Year Ended December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four be approved.
All right. Any opening comments?
As mentioned, I think we have great confidence in KPMG, the continuity from year to year, following standard procedures, laid out a good timeline. So I think this is fairly straightforward to continue working with KPMG on the plan they presented.
Couldn't agree more. Is anyone else have any comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Well, thank you for joining and thank you for waiting. I apologize, but obviously the EIA presentation went long. Hope you enjoyed it yourself. And of course, we were excited about the library's awards. So appreciate your patience. And we will see you, I guess, in April, something like that. Yeah, looking down at March or April. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's get back to our agenda. Was there any business arising from the presentations from either EIA or the library? Seeing none? Oh, councillor Hughes, sorry, I apologize.
Okay, I just wanted to support the EIA with their initiative to the province. What I'm wondering is, do we, I don't know if the mayor is like willing to just do a letter and and sign off on it, or we need a council motion to do that or or what, I guess, is what I'm as a follow-up.
Do you want the letter? What would you want the letter to say?
Just to say that we support them and in their endeavors to try to get the province to give them money to move forward on this, to help them expand, et cetera, that they've brought forward for their initiatives. Because I know there's a saying, well, if you happen to meet somebody to do it, but that's very scattered as an approach. So I I think it would just be timely if we actually could just send a letter to say that we support them. I don't know if that.
I mean, we've done it both ways in the past. I've written. I've sent you guys emails saying, are you okay if I write a letter in support and if it's? I think there was.
They're willing to send it. They could, if we wanted to.
In the past, it's come to council for a motion because maybe not everyone's supportive, so I guess it's kind of a.
Like, I'm willing to just do it as business arising, just to say that we craft a letter to support them.
Why don't I, right, I'm good. Why don't I follow up with EIA? Say, can you send me your draft? And then I'll circulate it to you guys. And then if there's no objections, then I can send it.
Perfect. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right. So I better make a note to do that. Okay, next on our agenda is consent, which I think there's only two things left. So councillor Hughes, you want to go for it?
Yeah. So that the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved, six point one, regular council meeting minutes, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and nine point two, bylaw twenty slash two thousand and twenty-four, council committee bylaw update for second and third readings.
Call for the vote on that one. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. Six was just the minutes of September seventeenth approved on consent. Then we are into seven point one and seven point two, both some recommendations from the Arts Development Advisory Committee. The first one is about the great St. Albert, the great statue. It was pulled from consent by councillor Jolly, so I'll throw it over to you, Natalie.
Yeah, thank you. I just had a quick question. I see Emily's in the room as well. So I'm just wondering if the Arts Advisory Committee talked about kind of the risks associated with kind of literally putting a person on on a pedestal. You know, and doing something different possibly.
And I'll just add to that councillor Jolly, when the statue was stolen, it was identified that there was some confusion about who it was. People assuming that St. Albert was named after St. Albert the Great, so.
Yeah, and I don't know anything about him, so I.
Right, so it's it's a good question. So who? Mr. Fletcher, would you like to answer that question? Emily's sitting there waiting.
Yeah, thank you. Perhaps I'll ask Andrea Bose, I think is probably in the first instance, she's online and then turn it over.
Who? Sorry?
Andrea Bose.
Andrea.
From Community Services.
There we go. Yes, so I'm gonna have to turn this back to Emily about whether there was discussion about putting a person on as a as a statue. St. Albert, the great is a historical figure, as most statues are. Maybe I can send that back to her.
Sure, just for the St. Albert v St. Albert confusion. The city of St. Albert is named after the patron saint of Sir of Father Lacombe, which is actually St. Albert of Vuvain. The sculpture St. Albert was named after St. Albert the Great, who's the patron saint of education and learning. And this sculpture was initially commissioned by and sort of partially funded by the Continuous Learning Community Society as sort of a symbol of some of the values of the community, which is this dedication to lifelong learning, curiosity and wonder. And so this wonder and respect for the natural world and something that Al Henderson, who was the sculptor, took up quite beautifully in the work of having this sort of older child, not adult, like on the cusp of teenagehood, boy, holding this beautiful little bird in his hands as was sort of the general form of what the sculpture was. And the conversations that were had, because I was sitting on the committee at the time, around how to move forward with the theft of the work after it had been reported missing, were fairly nuanced and specific to this piece and people's relationships to it. And so the community was pretty upset that the work was stolen. It wasn't a piece that had kind of reached the end of its lifespan. Some of the other works who have come down out of the public art collection recently are works that were kind of just near the end of their tenure outside. This is a work that the community had had for a long time. It was still in really lovely condition and it had been part of that neighborhood for a while. And a lot of people talked about their connection to the sculpture as sort of this community figure rather than as a saint or sort of a symbol of larger learning. It was through this. The stories we're hearing from people were that this is a sculpture that they would visit and their kids would say hi to. And it become part of this imaginary games that they were playing and sort of growing up with this boy who held the sense of wonder and curiosity and lifelong learning. We did speak with the Continuous Learning Community Society and with the artist when sort of navigating how to move forward with a work that was stolen. A previous work that had been partially partially missing ploughshares had been just straight had the piece replaced. It was able to be reforaged really quickly. This one is a little bit more of a nuanced conversation because we didn't, the original molds didn't exist anymore that the artist used. But taking that into account, it sort of decided that they wanted, the artist wanted to be able to move forward kind of a recreation or a new version of this same sculpture because it already had this strong relationship built up for members of the public and members within the community as well. And so I don't know if that answers your question specifically. We did sort of talk a little bit about whether that whether the values of the work are still reflective of our community. And that's something we wanted to bring forward, but there is a lot of sort of stakeholders and nuance that came into these really long discussions on what to do next.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I didn't know it was the patron saint of of education. So we're not, so this historical figure, we're not worried that you know, they did bad things that are going to come up in ten years and we're going to have to be talking about that at council again.
As far as I know, St. Albert the Great of the sculpture is something fifteen hundred, sixteen hundreds. I have to check in with some of my colleagues who are more familiar with the saintly canon than I am. But yeah, he is meant to be a patron saint of education and the community loved how kind of young the sculpture was. I think it sort of gendered the sense of care, which is why people were so upset when he went missing in the first place. Because it's like this family, like semi-vulnerable family member in the community that's gone missing. It was, want to say on a personal note, I'm really excited to see it join a lot of the other works that are in St. Albert Place. A place that sort of celebrates learning and connection and community in a lot of different ways. And so we have a work in the lobby that's about geological time and like the environment around us. We have those beautiful Stein Steinheiner sculptures in the back. The emergent or becoming, which is the sculpture of the chrysalis. And so I think it'll be in lovely conversation to celebrate wonder and curiosity and learning as well.
Okay, thank you, mayor. That's all I have.
Councillor Broadhead, you have a question?
Well, Madam Mayor, I got to say that was fascinating. And so my question is more for Mr. Fletcher. I'd love to see a document about what she just put together. Yeah, so I I don't want to throw work at anybody, but if if you saw it in the best interest of council, they have a sort of a briefing note about what was just presented. That would be very helpful, at least for me.
Thank you, councillor. I could certainly ask the Arts Development, the committee perhaps to take a stab at that. Loathe to sign people to do research and homework on a particular front for that course if they've already got it, but we'll look into it.
Thank you.
My only other comment is thank you for pulling it, councillor Jolly, because I I'm not super excited about the location. I get the reasoning, a fear of theft, but is there is there going to be a plan moving forward that all art is going to be placed inside buildings or in especially City Hall? I feel like that theft has left us too scared to do anything outside and I don't want to I don't want to avoid having public art in public outdoor gathering spaces. So just want to hear your thoughts on future plans. Perhaps.
Perhaps I can speak to that mayor here. This, we aren't shying away from putting art in public places at all. It's just that we have to be very careful about what that location is, what kind of security we have around it, where is it placed in relation to people? And how secure is it mounted to the place that it is? That kind of thing. The location that it was in on Perron is not conducive, like it's changing with time too. So it's, do we put it there? Do we put it somewhere else? So really, if we wanted to do it right away, the location that we could conceive was in St. Albert Place. But and something that is the size that we can move forward with is also risky in in public. If it was something bigger, right, the bigger something gets, the harder it is for somebody to steal or I won't say damage, because damage can happen to anything and we, that's a risk that we accept when we take on public art, right? It's something that we know is always something that we may have to to deal with. Theft is another thing that we have to consider about where we put things and how they're they're located and secured. So we're certainly not moving away from public art in public places.
That I'm at art in public outdoor spaces.
Yeah, for sure.
The pine cone or mother mama bear because they're huge, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, Mary. I just, I got a note here from. Sorry, Mayor. I just, I got a note here from Elizabeth Wilkie, who's our Director of Community Services. So AHF has the information Councillor Broadhead spoke about, so it would be a very easy matter to put that together.
Awesome. Councillor Bremanski.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Emily for being here. She's a wealth of knowledge to have on our Arts Committee. And I have the fullest confidence in the committee. We've been through a few different committee changes in the process of working this out. So I mean, there's been so much discussion, you know, one can be after another and everything has been positive to this point. There was a plaque on the old sculpture that described somewhat of the history as well. That was on base of where they stored the time capsule. When this statue was stolen, it was very, very heavy, but it still didn't stop the, you know, the whoever took it from taking it quite easily. And, and so we even had further discussion in committee about what the, you know, do we do bronze again? You know, is there something that's of less value? There was many, many conversations about why and what works best and such. So the committee was absolutely, you know, I think thorough and thorough beyond being thorough. It was, it was wonderful conversations with everyone. The unfortunate part about this one, when it was stolen, I know it's, it's, you know, time's passed and people might not even know everything that went on. But the time capsule that was inside, the base of the sculpture was actually damaged in the process. And so the Arts Committee went through that and preserved those things that could be preserved. And, and those are put in a secure place now. So there was a lot of great intent and work and respect, you know, to everything the community put into this. And again, I commend the, you know, Emily's been on the committee for a long time. And there's, you know, a lot of really, really passionate people on the Arts Committee and they're the best in my opinion. So I want to thank you and, you know, they get to the depth of everything and they're very, very resourceful in their research and their, and their intent. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Councillor Bremanski. All right, Councillor Jolly, are you okay making the motion? Oh, you had another question?
Yeah, I was just gonna say I can make the motion if we're ready.
Go ahead.
That $30,000 be withdrawn from the Public Art Reserve for the replacement of the stolen St. Albert the Great statue.
Excellent. And I'll accept that. Any opening comments?
No, nothing further. That was great. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to seven point two, Councillor Jolly, I'll send it right back to you for your question.
Yeah, sorry. Let me grab that one. So that's the artist. Yeah. So the artist for the Children's Festival. We do this kind of every year as far as I know. Is there any way to kind of just put it into the budget so that we don't have to make this motion every year?
Hi, yes, I'll just start that off and then I'm going to pass it over to Stan. We do need, as you've mentioned, Councillor Jolly, we need the money for 2025. We need it now. We can't wait for December because we need to get the artist contracted and working on their idea and concept for the festival in May. So we can't really wait for it to go to budget in December. So that's why we're coming right now. But as far as it, you know, becoming a budget line, I'm gonna hand that over to Stan to address.
Yeah, through the chair to Councillor Jolly, we can, it's certainly something that we can, if council chooses to add it to the budgets, it could be done through budget deliberations. It would just have to be, as Andrea spoke, that the money is needed now. So anything that goes in for 2025 would be for 2026.
And, yeah. So I guess I don't know if it's to you, Stanley, or to Bill, do you just need a PM to get that put in?
Yep, thanks. Now, sir, that's probably the easiest mechanism. I've got Mart over here on my left nodding at me. So absolutely, it can be structured. Again, we would respectfully request approval of this today and then we can codify.
Okay, thank you. If someone could write that PM for me, I'm happy to submit it. But yeah, that's, that's the only question I had today. This is great.
Councillor Bremanski has another question. Go ahead.
Thank you to the mayor to administration. I noted in the, you know, some of the art projects that have come up through the Arts Committee for the Children's Festival. There's been a broad range in the costs of them. So for example, you know, the air tent that we had was a very, very huge project. And it has been discussed through the committee that, you know, they, they'd like to do more with less kind of thing. And I mean, you have a reserve, but if you do a lot of very large projects that are just put through your deserve, reserve can become depleted. So would it be best to have perhaps a dollar amount on that approval or if, if you go forward in that direction?
Yeah, thank you very much, Counselor. I'll ask Stanley Chan to actually comment on that because you're right, it does vary from year to year. But there is an accounting mechanism that allows us to incorporate that, as I understand it, Stan.
Uh, thank you. Through the chair to you, Councillor Bremanski, we would put a dollar amount or we would recommend a dollar amount. You know, given that we'll take it back and we'll figure out what dollar amount would be appropriate for the type of projects that we're looking at. So, yes.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no more questions, Councillor Jolly, do you want to make the motion because you pulled it?
Sure, that $12,000 be withdrawn from the Public Art Reserve to support an artist to activate a space for the 2025 Children's Festival.
Perfect. All right. Any comments or anyone else?
No.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. Okay, moving on, the next thing on the agenda is eight point two, which is LED recognition lighting at St. Albert Place. And I have Tim Saunders down as our speaker. Tim, you with us?
I'm, I'm online.
Hey, nice to see you.
Good afternoon.
Whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Council. So I don't have a presentation, but I can provide some context to the request for decision today. In 2023, a council motion directed a capital charter be created for recognition lighting to be placed at St. Albert Place during the life cycle work that is ongoing at the facility. And ultimately in December of 2023, a budget in the amount of $125,000 was approved. Through Q1 of 2024, a detailed design was undertaken and consultation with stakeholders as St. Albert Place is a municipal heritage resource to ensure that the character defining elements of the facility were being conserved during the installation and addition of the lighting. A lighting option was selected, but it turned out that this was no longer being produced and we would no longer be confident that parts would be available for future maintenance. So the project team went back with the designers and ultimately elected a very similar system that could be applied to St. Albert Place. Unfortunately, the pricing that was used for the original budget request could no longer be maintained and is the reason that we are before you here today to request that an additional $125,000 be added for a total budget of $250,000 for the installation of LED recognition lighting at St. Albert Place.
All right, thanks. The background was pretty good, so I will open it up to questions. Councillor Bremanski.
Thank you. Through the mayor to administration, the, the cost has increased substantially. But the thing that's more puzzling to me is the time to install. Like, why does it take so long? You know, a lot of people get the seasonal lights installed in their home in a very, very short amount of time. Are they not similar or?
Through the chair to Councillor Bremanski, it is a commercial grade lighting and it doesn't have the same availability as the residential use. We have been quoted on the order of eight months. However, we would be looking to add this into the work as expeditiously as possible. But that is the timeframe that has been delivered to us thus far.
Okay. And is there a lot of choices of people out there that do it? Or are you pretty limited?
Through the work on the, on the facility, we have been, we have additional requirements for those that are able to work on the masonry, the brickwork of the facility because of the heritage status. So that has limited to potential suppliers that are comfortable or that we are comfortable being able to perform that work. I do have Carson Zwiebers, who is our Capital Projects Office Project Manager with us today that he could provide additional context into the selection of the vendors.
Thanks, Tim. Through the chair to Councillor Bremanski, that's correct. So we've on boarded through our construction management contract here at St. Albert Place. We've hired specific contractors to complete all electrical scopes as well as all the brickwork. And this task would involve both of those trades. So they've been carefully selected through a procurement process, process, sorry, of not only financial, but a technical requirement and their understanding of the importance of the facility here. So they've met all those thresholds and we would like to continue to work with them. And those are the, the costs that have come in through those two qualified contractors.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Uh, Councillor Killick.
I thank you very much for the, for the update. Bit of a shock that it's gone up in price, but my understanding is we've selected GVA lighting. Is that correct?
That is the, yes, through the council, through the chair to Councillor Killick, that is the, the brand and the manufacturer that has been elected because of the, the attachments that it does include as well as its ability to wash the, the surfaces that we're looking to achieve through this project as well.
Yeah, I just by way of confirmation that when I looked at the GVA website, they, they indicate that their lighting is, creates landmark signature buildings. And they list a whole bunch of current projects to make sure, just to, to give some scope that we're headed in the right direction, even with a, an increase, increase in, in price. And they, they list sites like the Rochester Cathedral that was built in 604 as, as being allowed to have their, their lighting added or attached to that building. They, it's attached to the Louvre, the Pointe du Bridge, Lincoln Center, Tower Bridge in London. Very interestingly, City Hall in Montreal. They're the same company that did the lighting in, in Edmonton on the Walter Dale Bridge. So we know it works in our climate and, and can be attached, installed in a very sympathetic way. And from a technical standpoint, they went through a very rigorous technical evaluation to meet the standards at SATE. So I think they're, they're a great company with a great product and a great track record of, of being sympathetic and, and meeting our requirements for our beautiful City Hall here. The other nice thing is my understanding is that they're actually a Canadian company. So we're supporting a Canadian company in, in going ahead with this. Were, were there any other kind of options that to, that could have been looked at to have been made, make this job cheaper or less expensive, I guess, not cheaper because quality is, like I think when I looked at the company, they're a very high quality company that would work very well in St. Albert Place. But was there any other options that were looked at?
Through the chair to Councillor Killick, I will ask Carson Zwiebers to chime in there. You are correct, there, there is a lot of application of this particular type of lighting, this model of lighting at some very significant heritage facilities. Additionally, East Village Bridge in Calgary has also had this lighting placed on it. But Carson, over to you.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, that, that's correct. So GVA was carefully selected, obviously, Councillor Killick, for their unique system that obviously has been used in similar facilities around the world. The, the most recent one with this new system specifically that we've got quoted is, as Tim alluded to, the Reconciliation Bridge in East Village in Calgary. So it is the latest and greatest model with it. The versions that are currently on the Walter Dale and the High Level, they're the old style that we previously had pricing for that just are no longer being carried. So we've gone to kind of their newest, newest version with that. In terms of alternative products, we have looked into different styles of lighting. Your, your traditional bulb style lighting or simple LED strips. The concerns with that with our designers is just finding something that would be considered commercial grade and long use. We obviously want to make sure that if we're going to permanently install a system on the exterior of the facility that is a heritage building, we want to make sure that it's long lasting and not something that we're going to be tearing down in three to five years and in replacing it with a new system. So we just, we're unable to find a system that was going to give us that life expectancy as well as the ability to mount it to the brick. That, the, the ability to do that is, is proving to be more challenging than I think everyone kind of anticipated. And then last but not least, we've really wanted to maintain this ribbon style lighting and working closely with the AHNF to ensure that we're not compromising the heritage designation of the facility. We wanted to find a lighting system that would, as, as Tim alluded to in the past, would wash the brick instead of just kind of been pinpoint lighting. And this is just the best system that offers that. The really only other option to reduce the cost would be to shorten the length of it right now. This, this whole conversation would be just for this kind of 300 linear feet on the front of the building. So if we start on kind of the balcony where St. Albert Place is written on the main entrance and wrap around on St. Anne Street around the Arden Theater, that's kind of the length that we're looking at right now. So there would be the potential option if, if it was the wish that we could reduce that length. But that's kind of just a nice cutoff point that we've concluded with on the project team right now.
Uh, thank you. This, this is just confirmation on a financial question. The backgrounder said it would, the additional 125,000 would come from the Capital Reserve. So there'd be no direct impact to, to taxes. Is that correct?
Yes, it is, Counselor.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Councillor Mackay.
Yeah, thanks, Carson, for your clarification because yeah, I think you answered some of my questions that I had. Other than this will just wash the front of the building. It won't allow us to actually put up kind of words or symbols or anything like that, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, Councillor Mackay.
All right, thank you.
All right, I see no more questions. Councillor Jolly, you're good?
I have one question. I, I'm, I'm just curious if an alternative was considered to do the, the projections, so the projection mapping? Like, is that, is that cost comparable to what's being considered here? That was an IR from 2022. I can look it up.
Uh, through the chair to Councillor Jolly, I'm assuming you, you're referencing kind of like more like a spot spotlight style that would point onto the building?
Is that what you mean? Mapping is like a technology that is able to project images on, onto a surface that takes into account kind of changing surfaces. So the brick is kind of weird, so it could project onto it. So it actually looks good. And.
Certainly, Tim and Carson, Counselor, can jump in here, but no, we stuck with the, the letter of the motion, which was the recognition writing. There are alternate methods, right? As again, that would allow projection of words, images, right? That, that's a different construct than I think what we understood to be the intent of the motion. And so we stuck to that, though there had been, as you noted, previous discussions on that particular technology.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. See no more questions. Is anyone wanting to bring forward the motion? Councillor Killick, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. That the budget for council dash zero three seven LED recognition lighting at St. Albert Place be increased by 125,000 for a total budget to 250,000 to be funded from the Capital Reserve.
All right, I'll accept that motion. Go ahead on your arguments.
Yeah, thank you much. It's unfortunate that the original company, you know, either went out of business or whatever happened to it. But I think through the questions, we've come to understand that this is a very good quality product. Maybe even better than the, the first one that was originally proposed. So I'm really glad to hear that. Interesting that it was just installed on the reconciliation bridge in Calgary. And I think that signifies exactly what we are trying to achieve here. Is that this is, is recognition for multiple events throughout the year. Whether it be orange for truth and reconciliation or blue to recognize our, our, our police services. Many, many, many colors that could be displayed throughout the year for ongoing recognition that for, for many events. And I, I liken it to all of the other activities. Of course, the closest big one is the, is a Walter Dale Bridge. is a Walter Dale Bridge recognition that's been in operation for, for several years. So this will give, um, St. Albert Place, it'll, it'll enhance the outside of it with, uh, it's very sympathetic to the look of the building and it will allow us to change it throughout the year as, as different events, um, uh, happen. And it, and, and there is always something happening. So it's, it, it, it will be very well used. And I'm, I'm very happy to hear that it, it's actually, uh, a long lasting, uh, very solid, uh, technology. So, uh, I, I think this is something that unfortunate with the budget increasing, but I think increases happen everywhere. We're going to be talking about another big increase to a budget, uh, line item shortly. Um, but, uh, in that it's funded from the capital, this increase would be from the capital reserve. It will not affect taxes. So that's, um, a very good point to highlight as well.
Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. Um, I won't be supporting this. I just, this is not a necessity. And so when we're looking at nice to haves, there has to be a, a limit to the level of budget increases that will go to it. And I think that a quarter million dollars for lights is more than I think the taxpayers would be supporting regardless if it comes from the capital or something else. It's money you can't spend. You only spend each dollar once and you can't spend that on something else that is actually a need. So it's hit a threshold in my opinion where it's difficult to justify to the taxpayers why we're spending a quarter million dollars to put lights in the building. And, um, if the cost were to come down again, we find different manufacturers, certainly have a discussion, but at this point I think it's exceeded what I can accept.
All right, I see, uh, Counsel Jolly's hand up.
Yeah, I, I'm also not supporting this. Um, and, you know, I, I want to address the comparison to a fire truck. You know, lights on St. Albert Place is, it's not the same as a fire truck. Um, I can't in good shock, in good conscious support a, a quarter of a million dollars for this, um, for this project. Um, I think too, you know, if we're looking for, uh, uh, kind of more affordable option that, um, that projection technology. So back in 2022, um, it was coming up at a hundred thousand dollars. And the value of those types of projections is space activation. So we're not activating spaces by making it colored lights on St. Albert Place. Um, when you have the video projection technology, um, you're, you're looking at the ability to, to, you know, screen moving pictures. Um, there's some incredible, um, film festivals out of, um, Europe in particular that use projection mapping. Um, and it's absolutely incredible, um, what they're able to do with those spaces. And, you know, 2022 is a hundred thousand dollars. So it's probably more than that now, but, but it's not a quarter of a million dollars. Um, so, so I'm not supporting this. Thank you.
Anyone else on debate? Counselor Mackay.
Yeah, I'll go. I, I, I take the arguments and I, I would, I just, I was hesitant to support this at the beginning in relation to it. But I did see some, uh, potential value of, of having lights that, that, um, we could use to recognize specific events or occasions that are happening in my community. But, um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for LED legs, that's for 300 feet. I would have a hard time explaining that. Um, that's like eight hundred and thirty-four dollars a foot. Um, and it, I, it compared as Counsel Jolly said, compared to other infrastructure needs or, uh, costs of, uh, rising expenditures like the next item. I mean, that's something we need. This is something that would be nice to have, but, um, and I, I, I take that it's coming from a reserve. But again, it's, it's money that potentially we could use for something else and we just wouldn't have it available. So it's, it, it's a, it's a difficult decision for me, but I think, um, the fact that it's a, like, uh, has been mentioned quarter of a million dollars for LED lighting. It's just a hard sell for me.
Seeing no one else, um, I'll jump in unless going once, going twice. Okay. Um, I'm supporting it, Counsel Kilik. I said during, uh, budget that we were always spending our capital dollars on, need must haves. Fire truck is going to be the next conversation. Obviously we need to support those. And we very infrequently, if ever, spend capital dollars on something the entire community can get behind. And, um, yes, we can sometimes spend on recreation, but only segments of the population use the recreation. But I just see this as something that would make a resident walking by City Hall maybe last night if it had been lit up orange. Feel proud to be part of St. Albert. I, I see this as, um, honoring not just our community, but some of, some of the important and special days that we all celebrate that are often associated with colors. Uh, so, yeah, it's a hard pill to swallow, this extra dollars, but, um, it is coming out of a capital reserve. And I think, uh, it's about time we were able to say to St. Albert residents, this one's for you. To close, anything?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just to close, I think we have to, again, look at the, the opportunity that we have. We've come this far. We've done the, the scoping, the design. You, you know, picked a, uh, uh, a preferred supplier. So to, uh, continue, uh, down this path, I think is, is the right thing. It, it also is something that is sympathetic to this building. I'm not sure, um, that our arts and heritage would, would be in agreement with splashing, you know, ever changing videos on the outside of, of St. Albert Place. Um, the other thing is with, with those videos, you, you typically, you don't get the effect when you drive by. Whereas lighting up the building in a constant color, um, in the dark hours, uh, e- even in dusk, um, you, you have that visual, uh, impact that everybody is able to see. That's one aspect, but the bigger driver for me bringing this forward was that this is we, a recognition of all of the great, um, events and, and, and some not so great. You know, we, we could do the, the green and yellow to remember the tragic situation of the humble bus crash. Um, but we can also celebrate all the good things that happen in our community as well. And, uh, and I think this is a discussion of, do we want to have our, our building on a world class? Uh, as, as I said, landmark signature, uh, building for all of the residents to enjoy. So, uh, I'm, I'm hoping that we can look at this as, as a true enhancement to the building, uh, that, that all residents would get to enjoy and, and also bring forward the, the memory of people walking by going, hey, why is that building that color? What, what is that recognizing? Oh, it's muscular dystrophy week or it's Red Cross week. Or we're remembering fallen firefighters or, or, or police officers. I, I think there's just so many opportunities, uh, throughout the year that we could use this, this beautiful building to make a, a statement on a, on a regular basis for all residents to enjoy. And, uh, and, and it could also put our, our building, uh, back on the, the kind of the world stage with other buildings like the Louvre or Tower Bridge in London, or even as we said, Walter Dale Bridge in, in Edmonton. So I'm, I'm hoping council will support this and, uh, give the, I, I'm going to say green light uh, to, uh, to move it forward. Thank you. Thank you.
I will call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes with Counsel Hughes, Jolly and Mackay against. Right, we are on to, sorry, my, uh, eight point three, which is another budget increase. So I see our chief Everett Cook in the room. So I'll pass it over to you.
Sorry, thank you and good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. Again, it's a pleasure to be with you here today. And as you're aware, administration is before you today with a request to increase the amount of available funding for the forthcoming purchase of St. Albert's second or new aerial apparatus from two point four six nine to three point four six nine million. This, this request is within the limits established within the Boring Bylaw twenty-two slash twenty twenty-one. The fire apparatus market has changed. There's no doubt about that. As detailed in the agenda report before you, all fire services are, are now facing the same unprecedented challenges with respect to procuring new apparatus, prolonged construction times and significant increases to cost. Although dependent on the type, on the apparatus type, build times that were once upwards of 24 months are now reaching new timelines of over 50 months. Of course, this is related to constructions of larger units to, which are being built to department specifications, as an example, a tower. Prices have increased. I was informed that when the cost for this new aerial unit for station four was established back in 2019, that a factor of two percent was added per year to the purchase price of our existing aerial, allowing it, allowing us City St. Albert to arrive at the numbers that were included in the capital project. Since that time and reported to us by industry vendors, increases are now being applied to new apparatus quarterly to keep up with manufacturing costs, not annually. I do not see this type of increase could have been on anyone's, or pardon me, I do not see that this type of increase could have been predicted by anyone back in 2019. Going to go off script just a little bit, uh, to provide counsel, a little bit of information as to what's transpired, which supports the challenges that the industry is facing today. Um, as I've indicated in the agenda report, uh, fire administration is leaning towards focusing on stock or demonstration pro, uh, apparatus program. Not only does it allow us to procure apparatus sooner or quicker as they are a standard build, but it also, it also too reduces the cost. That we're not the only ones pursuing or after this avenue or exploring this avenue. Following, uh, information or after receiving information from one vendor, one of many, of course, um, over the course of the last three months, stock and demo apparatus, once they land on the market, have lasted up to anywhere from two and a half hours to four hours. Just today, an apparatus, or the, the stock program for the month of October was announced at eleven, I got notified at eleven oh four AM. This is from my deputy chief who was standing beside at a, uh, at a pre-delivery inspection with a salesperson from a, from a vendor. At eleven oh four, we were notified that their new list had dropped. And before coming in chambers today, we were notified that all the, all the stock and demonstration apparatus have now been purchased. In addition to what I've just shared, I feel it's, uh, I apologize, I'm on the wrong page. Well, not there we go. Further, uh, to the challenges presented regarding build times and the costs as I've described, I also feel prudent though to note that funding for this unit was made available, uh, to administration in 2022. So that procurement could begin, however, uh, delays were encountered as we were addressing, uh, addressing vacancies among administration staff. These are the folks that would lead or be assigned to lead the procurement activities, working with our procurement department. And of course, our apparatus committee made up of our members. As men, mentioned, administration is asking for council support and increasing the funding available from two point four six nine to three point four six nine, so that a purchase can be made in a timely manner. So when the units become available. Of course, I thank you for your time and be very happy to answer any questions that you folks may have.
All right, questions are lining up fast. Counsel Mackay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My, my first question might be actually, uh, to you, Mr. Fletcher, in relation to the background or information identified. When this, uh, fire truck was first identified as being required back in, I guess, fire dash zero one six. Um, we use two percent as kind of a line item. Have we altered that in any future project charters?
Yeah, I was just getting it open here.
Uh, thanks for the question, Counsel Mackay. It's certainly something we'll have to be building in. Of course, it'll be mostly for our replacement units, um, uh, that's managed by our fleet department, um, that will have to be considering those higher, uh, increases and monitoring the market. But it has been just in the last few years that that has changed, um, obviously significantly from, you know, about two to three percent a year up to over eight percent per year type inflation. So our, our, um, certainly our replacement units, I think this is one of the last units we're procuring for the, for the growth units. Um, but we'll, we'll have to make sure that those, uh, price increases are built into our replacement plans.
Thank you.
It really highlights that when council decides to delay a capital project, just to save money that year, it costs, costs residents more in the long run. Yeah, it's interesting. Sorry, I interrupted.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, actually it kind of feeds into my secondary question around it because you do identify in the background or the fact that the change in the construction method of Fire Hall four kind of delayed us either. But did that delay the actual purchasing of our apparatus or our growth, growth position or, um, purchases had already been approved?
Uh, through the chair to couns, Counsel Kilik or Mackay, sorry, signs are off a little bit from my angle, apologize. There we go. Uh, no, that, that delay of the station wouldn't have, uh, delayed the procurement of the apparatus. That was strictly due to the fact we were dealing with vacancies among the fire leadership staff.
Do we plan far enough out in advance now? Because I mean, obviously the information that you just did freehand in relation to the piece of apparatus that came on at eleven oh four this, this morning. And is now, I mean, the, the inventory that was on that list is all gone. Um, with that method, does that allow us to say, okay, all of the following apparatus are gonna kind of timeout in, in 2025, 2026, 2027, and so that we can actually, can, we can actually be there waiting for that? Because I mean, if these things are taking up to 52 months to, to manufacture and get on the road, um, are we, are, are, is it just kind of like, just by luck that something we want is on that list and we're going to buy it?
Maybe I could jump in very quickly and then I'll ask Tim Saunders, uh, because that, that's actually a fleet holistic question, right? And I think applies to more than just fire engines. I, I think we saw some success with, uh, transit with the bus procurement over a three-year cycle. So I know there's this, uh, a concerted effort, um, you know, to map the life cycle and then ultimately to budget it over a multi-year budget cycle to come for council approval. Uh, that's sort of simplistic, but, uh, certainly Mr. Saunders can, can comment more on that particular front, but that is where we're aiming at to your point.
Yeah, through the chair to Counsel Mackay, we, we definitely saw success with the, the transit bus procurement, which was over a number of years with the option for the additional, which we then, uh, went forward with. It seems that in the specialized equipment area, specialized fleets such as aerial units, such as some of the different fire truck assemblies, uh, some of the other equipment that we're seeing, the, the procurement time is, is quite long. And there is, I guess, market driven, the demand is greater than the supply. It is really the nature where we're at, especially in the fire apparatus, uh, as Everett has, has discussed today. Um, we see these, uh, offers come across and it's, it's incredible how fast they have to be uh, acted upon in order to be successful. And these are for the stock unit. So we've been working with our procurement team on different ideas such as the transit, such as different ideas we've had with the fire apparatus. Um, leading us to where we are at today.
I guess, and, you know, and they do it with buses and I'm looking at Counsel Broadhead. But at the same time, I mean, are there only certain manufacturers out there that are only out there? You would think that this kind of would drive competition, yeah, but it doesn't seem to, does it? That might be more of a statement than a comment or a question. I don't know.
If, if I may, um, this isn't specific to one vendor by any means. And we are, uh, as best as we can within our procurement policies and practices, engaging all vendors. And all vendors have the same style of programs in place for which departments such as ours are drawing from. Uh, so this wouldn't be unique or specific to any, anyone. This is a new industry norm that, uh, just simply do not see an end for, uh, for the foreseeable future.
Counsel Broadhead.
And while Counsel Mackay, I believe you covered my question, but, uh, so in the past, we've, we've set up a, uh, a committee to get together, a review, what we believe to be the optimum vehicle for St. Albert, uh, which ends up being a bespoke unit to the, to the manufacturer.
which ends up being a bespoke unit to the, to the manufacturer. Is that what's leading to the fifty four month delivery time?
Through the chair to Counselor Broadhead, yes, specification-built apparatus are, so those are apparatus built to, as you say, to the specifications for, for our city that are designed by our, our committees. That is what is drawing that timeline out further. Whereas a stock unit, one that is built to a standard specification, call it basic, if you will, it may not be a good descriptor, but call it a basic truck, is able to be built in a more timely manner as it doesn't have what some may call all the bells and whistles that another unit may. I do want to stress, however, though, that through the stock programs, there is still opportunities for modifications to the unit to be made to address some of the desires of an apparatus committee that they bring forward. So there is still room for, for change on those trucks. So we're not just fine, here it is, here's your truck off the shelf, go use it. We do have that opportunity to make modifications to bring it closer to what the city of St. Albert may want.
So how many, how many manufacturers of fire equipment are on the, are in the marketplace or like?
You know, off the top of my head, I'm going to say I can easily count for, for five off the top of my head. Most closest to us is commercial emergency truck. We deal with Rosenbauer. There's also Smeal. There used to be a manufacturer called American of France. I understand that they're no longer in business, of course. And there are other vendors as well. Our tender unit, which is now on its way here to St. Albert, has just entered Ontario, actually, is coming out of a manufacturer called Maxi Metal out of, out of Quebec, as a matter of fact.
I, I just can't imagine a bidding situation that we're currently in leading to less costly vehicles. I, do you, do you see a bidding war almost like buying a house?
It's, we're not currently in a bidding war. No, I wouldn't describe it as that. We are in a time and execution war based on the vendor's need for a letter of intent to be signed and delivered from a municipality, the city of St. Albert, as quickly as possible. That allows them to then secure that unit. And that is what will be asked for and what we have prepared and are prepared to deliver to a vendor that has a unit close to our needs in the future, so we can secure it. So it's about time, it's about execution. As soon as we hear about a unit that meets our needs and, and it's like, yep, that's the one. We can say, here's our letter, hold the unit for us, and they will do that as we sign the, sign the contract, so to speak.
So, so it's a little bit of first come, first served. So the letter of intent is, I'm, I'm going to authorize them. We're here today so I can authorize it with sufficient funds to purchase the type of apparatus we're talking about. If what Chief Cook had talked about, it happened tomorrow and those things had dropped, we'd have been in the queue. Okay, but it happened today, sadly.
Does this mean that Mr. Saunders is opening up his computer every morning to the site and
Yeah, probably.
See if there's a truck available? Anyway, thank you for that answer. Appreciate it.
Counselor Romansky.
Thank you through the mayor to administration. The increase is an interesting number that it's one million dollars to the penny. Is this allowing for some buffer room? Is there a consideration that the vehicle will not be that cost in the end?
Through the chair to Counselor Bemansky, yes, the, the amount does allow us that buffer room. The last two units that have come down, that have been announced that meet our specifications, have come through a two point eight million dollars Canadian. That is not inclusive of any equipment on the apparatus, but that is, or any changes, as I, as I mentioned, where we have an opportunity to make modifications. Those obviously come at a cost. So it does give us the opportunity to add equipment as what was originally planned in the project charter for this apparatus, as well as to make some modifications. It's not our intent to use the entire amount, but it does give us that buffer. Should future apparatus in Q four of twenty twenty four increase another two percent, it gives us the flexibility to still move forward with making that purchase in that timely manner by delivering the LOU two.
Okay, and that amount would be relayed to council at that time then, or? If there's.
We, we could, we don't normally.
I'm just curious, where's the, you know, where's the funds go back to or what would be the intent there?
Capital reserve, I would say.
Uh, yeah, so.
Through the mayor, the council, we would communicate it as part of the project charter through the quarterly reports. There would be actuals to forecast, and then you would get an update on what was actually spent on that particular project. So there would be updates and then we would provide an annual agenda report to council that has all the projects and if there's any overages and underages, and then we transfer any funds back to those reserves. So we do provide status updates on all the capital projects.
Get that, or that has carryforwards, closed projects, yeah.
But, but not specific reporting on.
Not each one, that would be crazy. Yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah, so you would understand what was actually spent on the unit by the time it was procured, but remember, this is also being done through borrowing. So if, if it came in less, we would, we wouldn't borrow the money. Or in by like, again, gives us the opportunity to borrow up to that amount, but we only obviously can borrow up to the amount of council approval, and we would only borrow what we, what we needed to fund.
Right. It's always good news when you get a better deal, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be nice to hear about it. Thank you.
Counselor Killik.
A couple of simple questions, I hope. The St. Albert Fire Services Apparatus Committee and has looked at this and, and agreed to this approach. And the, the membership of that committee, does that include our, our union? Or some representation from our, our union firefighting staff? Or membership, I guess? Are they part of the committee that would be signing off on this approach?
I believe.
Or is it purely administration?
Through the chair to, to Counselor Killik, to your two questions. The style of apparatus that we're currently, currently trying to procure is one, as I mentioned in the agenda report, that the city of Saint, or city of Lethbridge currently uses. We did actually take many members of, or multiple members, I believe it was four, stand to be corrected on that number, to Lethbridge to have a look at that apparatus as, as well as the deputy chief of operations to review it, have a look at it, say, yes, this will meet our needs. Of course, there will still be some modifications that may be needed, and they are to the unit to bring it up to what was previously designed, and they are aware of the direction that we're currently going in. To your question of union representation, every member on the apparatus committee outside of administration is a union employee. They are all in scope. Our union president, Greg Harvey, did sit on that committee for some time. I believe he still does. I do not chair that committee, so I would have to actually confirm that for you and get back to you. DC Sawicki chairs that committee on our behalf. So I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't say.
No, that's, that's a, that's a good enough answer. I shouldn't, that doesn't sound right, but that's a complete enough answer for me that we've engaged with our, our union firefighter members to know that this, this is the right approach. So that's, that's good. Second question would be some of the customization. I, I, I know we've talked about special traction control needed in St. Albert for icy roads. There, there, this process of looking at a, a stock unit, and I, I think you've mentioned a couple of times, it allows for customization that we're, we're not buying a fire truck that works great in Florida, but isn't going to work in, you know, minus forty degree weather. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
We will have, I don't have the specifications and I haven't done a side, beside comparison and preparation for council today, but that is something that would be done by the committee and the, by the committee and administration when the specification of the, of the stock unit was brought forward and we were successful in, in holding that unit. Then they would be able to make that comparison and go through line by line and say, okay, well, we would like to add this if we can, we would like to add that. Your traction control devices, I believe you're speaking of, are called on-the-spot chains and such to allow you to travel better in slippery conditions and such, but that would be looked at. And yes, any apparatus coming to the city of St. Albert would have steps would be taken to make sure that it would be, it would operate effectively and safely in the northern climate, much as, much like heat pounds and compartment heaters as an example.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Counselor Hughes.
Thank you. So I'm just trying to get the timeline in my head right now. So this was approved in twenty twenty and then twenty twenty one, Warren Balla was approved. And then nothing was done for another year and a half, and it was twenty twenty two. And then it was said something of the nature of twenty twenty two, and then we didn't do anything because we had staff vacancies. So were this, did the staff vacancies last two years? Or I'm just trying to figure out what was this delay from the time that it was approved to the time that, to today? And, and how did, did we have a vacancy for two years?
Through the chair to, to Counselor Hughes, the funding available for the aerial apparatus was identified for twenty twenty two. That was in the project charter for the unit, which should be number fire, F I R E dash zero one six, I believe. I'm sorry, I'm not looking at it right in front of me, but that should be the charger, charter for the aerial apparatus. And that is when the funding was, was identified for availability or use. With respect to the, to the vacancies throughout administration, we went for a period of time where there was two administrators for the city of St. Albert Fire Service, one who was a retired member on contract and myself, as we worked to fill those vacancies. I'm very pleased to announce that we have a very, that we are fully staffed and we have a very competent staff on board, bringing a variety of experience from various services with our most recent addition being a twenty nine year member from the city of Winnipeg. Over the period of time, yes, we did have vacancies in our deputy chief's positions and as new positions were brought on, shuffles or portfolios were changed, leading to some of the delays that I've mentioned as well. Hope that satisfies your question.
Okay, I just, I feel like we, we knew that we needed this fire truck twelve months ago as well. Like, I feel like this conversation is not new, that there was problems with the fire truck twelve months ago during the budget last year. And it's coming back forward to us now, almost like ten months later. So what was the delay this year to actually bring it forward from last winter?
I would say it's the realization that a build of us, that the build of a specific or a spec build apparatus for our service is now upwards of fifty two months, understanding that that could be in excess of the timeline of the opening of Station Four, that the, the purchase of a stock unit is a desired approach by the city of St. Albert to ensure we have the right apparatus in place for the opening of that station.
Okay, so so if I go back, so let's say last November, December budget time, that was when we realized that the delays were now four-year delays. Is that right?
It was around that time, yes.
And then it took us ten months to decide to change over to stock?
The realization of changing over to the stock unit occurred this summer after, after our committee, or it was returned to us, that a specification-built apparatus would be approximately fifty months or so.
Time was, it, it was just changed to four or eight months this summer, or was it changed last year?
It's been increasing over, I've been with the city of St. Albert for three years. I would suggest it's been increasing since that time. As the demand on the fire industry continues to increase or to grow, the industry, it's, it's a demand versus supply issue as, as been already indicated.
But I think to your point, counselor, last year at budget, it was not known that there was a fifty two year, or fifty two years. A fifty two month build time. And so the, the original estimate was done on about a twenty four month build time, twelve, right? This industry standard, the committee went through, put specifications together, procurement reached out, fifty two months, okay, we need to revisit this, and that essentially looks at the delay from twenty three budget. The deliberations on budget in twenty three might, might, you know, excuse me, for twenty four budget deliberations and now.
Okay. Okay, because I'm, I'm trying, okay, thank you for that, because I'm, okay, so we're looking at this just last year at this time. And there was issues with the fire trucks being down quite a bit. There was issues with all of that. We still didn't have, we still didn't have a fire truck mechanic. And, and that was discussed as well during budget. And so we knew that then, and we thought we had twenty four months then, but we did not proceed forward at that time.
No, we did proceed forward.
I'm just trying to figure out why. Like, the problems about the fire truck and having a need again, new one, that was not new. The budget was approved in twenty twenty one. I think we approved the fire trucks when we approved the project budget in twenty twenty. So what was the onus for the delay of last fall, when we thought, we thought we had the time, we didn't have a four-year delay, at least we didn't think we did have a four-year delay? And yet we didn't move forward. And I'm assuming at that point, we would have filled up some of those vacancies. So what was the thought process for, we're not doing this at this point, and we're gonna just sit on it for the seven months before we go and decide to go to stock?
Certainly, Chief Cook can go in. I respectfully would disagree that we sat on it for seven months in terms of fire. The point is that when the, the point was made, the, the committee sat down, that doesn't, that's not an instantaneous time. It takes time for the committee to come up with the specifications. The estimate had to be revisited when it was determined that those specifications would result in a fifty-year, two-month bill or return. So there's that, there, there is, the, the chief cook said it wasn't material. The moving dates of Fire Hall Four did have an impact because you need to store these vehicles somewhere other than outside. So I, there, there was a delay. I'm not gonna polish that. I mean, the, the, the fact is that it existed, but from the discussions last year until now, I don't believe is unreasonable.
Okay, so going forward, there's other trucks that need to be replaced as well, right? Like, this is one for the new, but my understanding is there's also other trucks that need to be replaced. So have we put in the orders for those trucks to be replaced already? I think Counselor Mackay kind of touched on this, but I just want to when are the next trucks going to actually be ordered? Or are we just gonna do the fire sale, so to speak, of fire trucks? And try to get in there within four hours of something coming forward? Is that the new plan, or is our plan to put forward something now for replacements, and if so, have we done it?
So currently up for replacement are two fire engines with the options for a third, and I believe I identify that or the process and steps that have been taken in the agenda report that was provided to council, where an RFQ has been released already with respect to, actually, here, it's right here. While a request for quote has been released for the purchase of two new fire engines with an option for a third, one growth and two replacement, this RFQ is focusing on acquiring stock units which will reduce costs while requiring the expedited delivery time as well as consistency in, in design. We stipulate within this, within this RFQ that the first unit is to be delivered within twelve months of signing the contract. Further to this, we have the scheduled replacement of our rescue unit, which is not a firefighting apparat, it is a firefighting apparatus, but it doesn't carry a pump and hose and such, which is now being looked at by administration. And once this RFQ for the fire engines is settled, we will be focusing on that unit next.
Okay, so just so I understand, because it, there's a lot of, there's a lot of fire trucks floating around right now? So we have one that we're trying to fill up as soon as possible. And if we got, like, let's say that we backtracked and we, we approved this two weeks ago, and you were available to purchase this yesterday, what would be the delivery date? Would we be expecting ish?
The unit that we were discussing here that would became available today was set for delivery in March of twenty twenty five. However, that is prior to any modifications being made, so say Q two of twenty twenty five.
So assuming we got one tomorrow, we're looking probably about a nine-month delay before it would be on the road and barking around, right?
Before it arrives in St. Albert for training to start and for the truck to be equipped, training does take time as well.
Yeah, okay, so a year would be before it's like on the road type of thing, or, because you're probably looking at about, again, I'm just taking optimistic, but let's just say that today we they got a whole new batch, and we get in there and we get it, we get a truck. So we're looking at probably March or April to get pick it up, which is about six, seven months. And then another six, seven months or three months to outfit it and train it, or how much longer before this guy is on the road?
I couldn't speak to the training. I would have to actually take that away and bring information back and have to speak with our chief training officer, who is the one responsible for delivering training and oversight of training to the members. That would include aerial operations as well as pump operations and driving qualifications for the unit. I, I couldn't give you the specific timeline today, I would be guessing. And I would rather come back with a better educated estimate from the chief training officer for you.
When you know just an MMO or something, or send an email saying this is what we're looking at for the actual functional, just so we have an idea of the timeline, that'd be appreciated. So for the other trucks, we're gonna be buying them stock and then trying to modify them. Is that, that's what you're saying you're doing? And then those, we're looking at about a twelve-month arrival time. Is that what it?
The first unit is identified as a twelve-month arrival, and the second and third units would be staggered after that. The second unit, if memory serves, would be approximately six to eight months after the first. And then if we exercise the option, I believe it was closer to end of twenty twenty six, we'd be looking at for the third unit.
Okay, so I have just one more question here in the thought process. If, how confident are we that we can get these guys in a fire sale? Because you're looking at getting it potentially six. Because you're looking at getting it potentially six months sooner by kind of trying to drive it off a lot. Versus if we just order it, we know we have it in twelve months to then work with. And I'm assuming if we'd ordered it, we also could probably get some modifications put in during the build. So it sounds like to try to get this done, we're basically gonna be doing it three months earlier. Or for between, I'm gonna give three months for modification in my head, just cause I'm just gonna do it arbitrarily. So if we do it arriving at six to seven months and we give it two to three months for modifications, we're only but we're doing this on a risk that we, what if we don't get it? What if we actually don't get anything for the six to seven months and it's actually longer than doing the solid? So how confident are we that we can actually acquire this in this, a short term, temporary time? Versus just saying, hey, we know it's a twelve month delay, but we know when we're getting it.
And I'm sorry, I just want to be clear, you're referring to the area unit or the engines?
I'm talking about the one that we're voting on today.
The one we're voting on today, how confident I am that one? I am very confident providing that the right apparatus drops and we have the support of council here today in the letter of intent ready to go. I am confident that we will uh meet an expedited timeline for the arrival of that unit. But it is based on availability of the right style of unit, of course, from any vendor.
Okay. The other thing I have is the long term plan for fire. Um I know I had a motion uh earlier this year. My god, this seems like a long year already um about that. And there was a discussion about having something brought forward or there was gonna be some kind of plan, I think, by the end of this year. Is that still on track to have some kind of a plan?
Uh through the chair to to councillor Hughes, so as a plan carry forward for budget this year is the uh is a plan to uh engage or procure a consultant to come in and have a, take a third party external look at the fire service. To verify and to help us identify uh response times throughout the city, station placement, staffing. Of not only uh operational staff, but also administrative staff as well. In addition to the number and style of apparatus that we have. So that has been identified as a carry forward in budget uh this year.
So the intention would be to do it for the next year and have benefit, something available by the end of next year for a report?
I would start the procurement process on that as soon as possible and with the intent of having that report next year, yes.
Perfect, thank you. No more questions.
I see no more questions. I'll go to you councillor McKay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make the motion that the budget for capital project four two zero three three four fire aerial apparatus. Fire dash zero one sixteen be increased from two million four hundred and sixty nine thousand eight hundred dollars to three million four hundred and sixty nine thousand eight hundred dollars to be funded from the borrowing bylaw twenty two slash twenty twenty one.
All right, accept that most. Any opening comments?
I think a lot of the comments came out in the discussion and questions and I appreciate uh uh chief cook and administration. I mean, I mean, it's, looks like what's happened now is procurement for equipment and especially specialized equipment, like the type we're talking about, has become kind of like the crazy west. One would hope that municipalities or fire departments or specialized areas would actually be able to get together and maybe work out a strategy as how to deal with these things. But uh that's maybe for another time, but it's clear that this is something that we require um uh to obtain this um apparatus uh as soon as possible. Because we've heard of the extreme changes now that has occurred in relation to first, A, get on to uh uh the intended buying list and then actually to uh have it built, then have it delivered and then have our specialized equipment attached and the training required. So um this is a must have. This isn't something that we can uh say, well, we'll wait and see. Cause we've already seen what that's happened and it's part of a bigger problem ongoing, no matter whether we're talking about equipment or whether we're talking about supplies or whether we're talking about building materials or other infrastructure issues. And it's, I think it's gonna be a reality that's facing all municipalities for some time to come. So um like I said, this is something we need to, to do today so that we can move forward.
All right, uh councillor Hughes, go ahead.
Uh I'll be supporting this, but I would like to get updates as this um this and the other fire trucks that need to be purchased are are completed. Um when we first approved this, a a council ago, I believe it was, even there was an assumption that this would have been done and handled and and we wouldn't be coming back years later to ask for additional funds. And then trying to figure out how to bandy the solution to get it done as quickly as possible because the urgency has become obvious. So um I understand the other trucks are on their way to happening. But I also think that I was under the impression that that was happening last year as well, last fall. And yet we're back here and it still hasn't gone through. So I would like, if it's possible, to get just updates, whether it's by a memo or email, to say this is the status of all of the fire trucks. This has been purchased, it's either got one or we didn't, this has gone to tender, we know this is coming, just so that as a council, we are not um blindsided again, cause I kind of do feel blindsided about this one. Um we knew this was coming about a month ago, but the assumption for the several years was that this was on its way and not uh waiting. So and this is, and this is not about a council delaying the decision or postponing something. Council gave all the money, gave all the approval and we're just waiting to have it happen. Um just so that we don't make assumptions that council somehow delayed this. This was not a council problem. But I would like to see updates just so that I have confidence about this and that we don't have to worry about the fire truck issue going forward. That's it, thank you.
Mister Fletcher. Request for one member of council, if if that's, if you wanna uh notice a motion to to get that updates. I'm not sure like uh what kind of workload that is.
Yeah.
And you don't have to answer that right now. Quite, you you might need to do a little bit of figuring out. But um if that requires a lot of work, then we'll, we'll put it through as notice motion.
Absolutely. If you need it, just let me know and I'm happy to put it as an N O M.
Okay, councillor Killick.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to say that, you know, as the city grows, we absolutely know that our uh number of trucks and number of firefighters that, and emergency service uh workers that they will need to grow as well. Um I'd like to recognize the work done in the procurement committee. A difficult and challenging uh environment that's changing so quickly. Um new technology coming out all the time, costs increasing way beyond what we ever expected. Uh and getting the the right equipment for our, our city is absolutely critical. So uh chief cook, uh I, again, please recognition to the work done in by the uh procurement committee with uh Mister Saunders as well. I'd also note that that this borrowing uh increase of of the cost of the truck is still within the borrowing bylaw that we originally approved, twenty six million dollars. So although one item, one line item is increasing, uh the overall budget amount is not. And and we should really keep that in mind as well. Um I'm very pleased to hear that we have our, our uh I W A F members onboard with this approach to uh filling an urgent, short term need with this particular truck. And uh also pleased to hear that we have a long term strategy for the other engines and uh fire apparatus uh to to address this in a, in a, an evolving way. So uh long term strategy is also important and I'm pleased to to hear that through our discussion today. So absolutely will be uh supporting this.
I see no more hands up. So councillor Mackay, anything to close?
Yeah, I think uh councillor Killick got one of my points in relation to the closing comments around the fact that this still falls within the boring uh bylaw that we approved. Um and as someone who has had a a lot of experience buying very specialized equipment. It can be very challenging and I would much rather take the time to get it right the first time. So that we don't have to uh send it back or deal with other ongoing uh issues that basically take, keep taking the unit out of service. I know that's happened to me. And uh it's um can be extraordinarily frustrating to both administration and to the actual men and women that actually have to work on the piece of equipment. So it's important that uh we take whatever necess, whatever time is required to get it right. So uh unfortunately, in this case, it cost us a little bit of dollars. But again, I don't think that was our fault. I think it was more just the way that the world is at this particular time. But anyways, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed, sorry. The motion passes unanimously. Let's take a break, um cause we've got a few more things. Uh it's three twenty five, how about three thirty five, ten minutes.
Thank you for not putting that previous sentence on the recording about the pizza.
Uh, nine point one uh is the land use bylaw. Counselor Kilik has pulled it because he just has, I believe, some questions on the best time to make amendments. So go ahead, Counsel Kilik.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My questions were exactly as the mayor outlined. Um, there were two proposals in the backgrounder. One was that we approve the land use bylaw, and this is such a critical document. It's over five hundred pages long. If we approve it um today, and then do we have options to make amendments to it? Should we let it go to second and I know this is first reading just to get it on the table to debate. But in the background, or it did say there were two other options, which one was uh pass it at second and third reading and make motions afterwards? Or uh to make motions between second and third reading? And my question is really, what are the the benefits, pros and cons of of those two? Um, proposal, uh, proposed alternative?
I had um suggested to Bill, and I don't know if you is that if you have a minor one, like a typo, um, maybe just meet with planning ahead of time? And if it's more substantial, wait till after, but.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and you could see the entire planning team just popped up online there, so.
Freak.
Christina speaks up, but I think simplistically, um, you know, the two, they're they're two viable options. But ultimately, the danger of making motions and trying to work the the wording on the fly is the interconnected, complex nature of of the bylaw itself. And so, um, you know, I I think for for complex to allow the analysis to occur, it's better to pass it and do it afterwards would be my recommendation for a complex amendment. But Christina, I'd want to make sure that I did not.
And and if I could, I'd just like to make note that I was definitely the the thorn between the roses in that screenshot.
Um, so, um, yes, Bill, you are correct. Um, I think the, and I'll I'll pass it on to Barb because she was the one that helped draft the motions um in advice with ledge services. But the big thing is because it's such a large document and it's so complex, making changes on the fly is very difficult for us to do as an analysis. Um, and so what we're recommending in general is approve it. And then should you have amendments or questions or concerns, bring it up to us. Um, as we will be studying um, this document for the next year to make sure that we've got everything in place. We know there's probably some typos. We know there's probably some errors. There might even be some regulations, so don't particularly work that we don't catch right away. But it's good for us to bring it all. We're going to bring it all back in about a year just to collect all of these items. Um, but Barb, did you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Christina. I think you summed it up really well. Um, our preference is that the document get approved um at October fifteenth. Um, and then if you do have amending motions, we can bring back an amending bylaw.
Okay, tha- thank you very much. And it it was really this, this is such a big, important piece of legislation. As I said, over five hundred pages touches every part of the city, every developer, every community. Um, i- it's nice to know that if if we do approve it uh as suggested, that we would still have the opportunity to uh to bring forward proposed changes. So thank you, thank you.
Okay, and it's a good question because there will be probably some development community at the mic uh at the public hearing asking for changes. And even if we a hundred percent agree with what they're asking for, we can give notice of motion that day to debate three weeks later, which kind of seems a waste of time, but but you'd prefer it that way.
But a- again, I would defer to the team, but I think, you know, it's unlikely that they'll have the exquisite analysis on the spot, right, for any of these uh and and if they do, I'm sure they would tell us, right, that this is a simple one that could be dealt with.
Okay, I just want to say a waste of time. I mean, we're gonna have to pub- schedule a whole new public hearing, let's say in November to deal with an amendment, and that's okay? Okay.
Yeah.
You know?
I I I just wanted to say, um, the big thing for ourselves, quite frankly, from just a very practical nature, is to get this bylaw approved so we can continue on with our day-to-day work, um, because we are um, at this stage slightly in a holding pattern where we don't want to make too many amendments to the existing land use bylaw. Um, or to redistrict, come forward with any redistricting applications until the new zoning um in districts are approved. So um, Chelsea, Barb, anything else to add on that?
No, I think we're good. I think you've captured it.
Okay, um. So I'll go to you, Mike, for the motion for first reading. But just be aware that you threw the entire planning department into a tailspin when you sent that email. It was fine. It was perfect, yeah.
Uh, thank you. That bylaw eighteen slash twenty twenty-four be read a first time.
All right, I'll accept that motion, and I'm actually not even gonna call for debate, so I will just call the question. Motion or voting's closed and that motion passes unanimously. Right. Um, oh, we had one that actually passed on consent. Where is this one? Excuse me. Uh, bylaw twenty two thousand twenty-four went through three readings, which was about amending the various advisory committee uh bylaws to align themselves to some decisions we made earlier this year. I won't go through the detail. Now we are on to nine point three, which is the master rates bylaw. Uh, nothing really specific, although we've got some wording from counsel who's just to fix fix a few small typo errors. So I'll just turn it to you.
Yep, thank you. I'm just wondering if staff already has the um, the just the words for that one. I think you might have emailed it to me. If I did, then I'll go back and dig it up. But if not, if you want to put on the screen, I can.
I think they're just calling it up now, I guess.
Yes, we're just pulling it up just one second.
Sure. So Mayor, do we want to read the second and then do the amendment, or do we want just to include that? Or?
Sorry, let me just look at this. So what was your question?
Do you want me to do the second reading and then? Or do you want someone else's? Because I I just because of the amendment as well.
You can do both.
Second reading and then the amendment, sure. Just to make this move forward.
So we have second reading up first, and then we'll do the amendment.
Oh, okay.
Read them in order, those.
No, it's just the wording's different here. Um, do you want me to just the simplified wording, or do you want me to read the whole being a master rate bylaw?
Sorry, so the agenda package that you have, we didn't actually have the right wording in it. So Counsel Hughes, when she caught it this morning, we fixed it. So we're just keeping it simple, just nine, just the number without the actual title.
Yeah, so I'm going on the wording that you sent in your email today. Okay, you got that?
I do. I have to dig it out. Okay, so that bylaw nineteen slash twenty twenty-four be read a second time.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That carries unanimously.
Okay, and uh so then the third is that section six is scheduled C of bylaw nineteen slash twenty twenty-four be amended by deleting a hundred and thirty-two dollars and replacing it with two hundred and fifty dollars.
Perfect, good catch.
So just so that the public knows what we're doing, there was uh just a typo in the rates for people to fail to show up for a gas inspections, and the all the other um penalties were moved to two hundred and fifty, and this one was missed. So we are just catching this to make sure that it's consistent, and we don't have to worry about it moving forward. That's it.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. Motion passes unanimously.
And that.
Third reading.
That bylaw nineteen slash twenty twenty-four be read a third time as amended.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that passes unanimously. Okay, nine point four, natural gas franchise distribution pulled by Counsel Kilik because an alternative motion was presented. Um, so I assume there's no presentation prepared for this. Okay. We're good.
That's correct.
So I will open it up to Counsel Kilik and any other members of council for questions, and then we'll have a motion on the floor, whatever you see fit, Counsel Kilik. So any questions before we go ahead?
Uh, just to ask for clarification, I guess, to start the discussion as to why the, was there any uh rationale, or what was the rationale uh to keep the uh franchise fee uh the same uh as it currently is when we're renewing uh the major, the major gist of what we're doing is renewing the the contract for the ten-year period. How are the, how are they woven together?
The the uh, they're woven together insofar as uh the the primary purpose of this is the ten-year renewal. Um, part and parcel of that is the mechanism by which franchise fees can be set, and obviously, the recommendation at this point in time is not to change it. I know that we've got Ann Victor uh up on the screen as well as Monica Chan, and I would defer to have him for the rationale.
Uh, right, I'm gonna ask Ann Victor to provide commentary on that.
And thanks, Boon, through um the mayor to council. Yeah, Bill's correct in that we wanted to keep the focus on that. Um, the franchise agreement contract just renewal. And so there hadn't been any indication from council at that time that there was wanting to be um an increase. But of course, due to that being a there's, this is an alternative and stable and ongoing source of revenue that um administration would be open to any increases that council is considering.
I guess.
Oh, I I just.
Yeah.
Was trying to ask for clarification. Sorry, Ann, I maybe I didn't.
We talked about this. Go ahead, yeah.
Ask it correctly, but are the are the two tied together, or is there a a bent, like approving the contract renewal with the current rate in it uh at twenty point three? Uh, are are they locked together, or could we by proposing the number that I put forward at a higher rate, does that make the contract renewal more difficult or longer period of time, or can we separate the two?
No, that's a good question. Um, we can with the contract renewal, we can adjust the franchise fee rate percentage. So that is an option at this time. It doesn't lock us in at the rate that we're agreement. We're always have an opportunity annually to review that franchise fee percentage and adjust it through the term of the contract. So we're not locked in that franchise fee rate percentage, just to be clear. But we do have, definitely have the option to do that now, and it doesn't complicate it.
And so I think, you know, if I'm I understand some of the intent by if council determined that they were going to raise the, or you were going to raise the franchise fee today, we would not have to go back to the drawing board from a negotiation of of a contractual perspective, right? It would be.
That is correct.
But does it delay or make it more complex to to things at once today?
No. Go ahead, Monica.
Uh, uh, yes, you're, Bill, you're correct. Um, simply, we will just renew the contract at this point in time, and we'll submit the appropriate rate. If council would like to proceed with a different rate, then we'll put that in. Uh, and you know, today is the appropriate time to put that rate in because it uh coincides with the contract renewal period.
So.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Bill, I just, I think what I'm wondering is if you guys even had a conversation about should we propose to council to increase rate, because that was the best time to do it.
We didn't. So we we saw no compelling reason ultimately at the time of, so as you know, that the contract has been working on
Yeah.
An ad hoc basis for some time. So the focus was on setting
The contract.
Contract, uh, and then subsequent discussions could occur in due course about um franchise fees, which were just raised in the last little while. So no, we did not have
Yeah.
specific question and and uh, you know, um, there was no specific impetus for us to bring that forward, yeah.
But I think in my entire time on council, it's never been a staff recommendation to raise a franchise rate. It generally comes from up here. But.
Yeah, and the only, the only reason I bring it forward is because there was the benchmark rates. Um, well, I would have brought it forward in any case, but the the one of the highlights was that the backgrounder um, did show some of the other benchmark rates uh that were included. So that prompted me more to think and and uh uh in the direction of of signing the contract, uh, absolutely the the first order of business and highest priority. But if we're gonna do that, we might as well have the discussion uh of changing the rate at at the same time, as long as it didn't delay or make it more complex, or I'm going to go back to Alberta Utilities Commission or anything like that.
No, we're we're well within our legal limits, um, right? And and uh, you know, at the end of the day, franchise fees get too far outside my lane of expertise here, but it's sort of a flow-through charge, right, um, to utilities companies and ultimately, right?
So for today, if I if I would like to increase the franchise fee and have the debate with council uh today so that we can move forward, would that require a specific motion that would say?
It's it's in the alternative that.
Said, yeah, okay. And it it said X percent.
That, yeah.
Because that's why I said, what percent were you thinking of? Yeah.
Okay.
And no, no compelling objections, I guess, from administration. You don't have a recommendation one way or the other.
We don't.
Okay, thank you. All right, I see Counsel Jolly, Counsel Mackay, and Counsel Broadhead.
Uh, yeah, thank you. So, um, I guess just to confirm, Counsel Kilik, are you for sure putting forward that alternate? Because my question's about that.
Letting him think. Um, yeah, are you for sure doing in the alternative motion?
Uh, yes, abs- I'm sorry, Counsel Jolly, I, my apologies.
That's okay.
Yes, I am proposing on bringing for the alternative motion with twenty-five percent in place of the X.
Okay, thank you. So, um, to um, Mr. Fletcher, I guess, what would be the, you know, the dollar impact of that annually or, you know, ballpark?
I think they said in the background, a one percent was a point one, so five percent would be point five, am I guessing?
That sounds about right, but I will let the experts uh respond to that. Yeah, I believe it was a little over a hundred thousand dollars or one percent.
Hundred and sixty thousand?
So the impact on a one percent increase is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars incremental uh franchise fee revenue. Uh, a five percent increase will be approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in uh incremental revenue.
And that would just go to offset taxes?
Right, and the offset to taxes will be a five point five percent reduction in taxes.
Okay, uh, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, that's good clarification. Counsel Mackay.
Yeah, thanks. Surprisingly was my math, so I better quit while I'm ahead. Um, the the only thing, only question I have is um, do we have any uh corporal corporate knowledge as to why we landed on twenty point three percent in the last agreement? I mean, it seems like usually we go to like all our franchise fees were usually a a an even number anyways. I'm just curious as to why we picked the point three percent.
Weren't you here for that?
Well, I didn't mean, but I don't know why.
I can't remember. I'm old.
I think we just went at one point five percent increase, and that was, that was the round number, not, I don't know, Diane.
I'll step in. So I I can't come back to the original one, because when I started, the original amount was not a round number. It was eighteen point eight. Um, and then several years ago, what had happened was um, Atco had actually. Um, and then several years ago, what had happened was, um, Atco had actually changed the methodology for which the delivery rates were being charged. And that's what our franchise fee was based on. And they were actually reducing them. So we were going to actually lose revenue. So we bumped it up to twenty point three, actually to just be able to maintain The amount of revenue that we were receiving. So it was just a bit of a math exercise at that time, um, because they had changed the delivery rates that one particular year.
But they haven't, I mean, in this new agreement that, that we're looking at signing, they're not changing anything at all in, in between the, this one we're proposing and the old one.
No, I don't believe there's any significant changes in, in the rate calculations or anything. So this would be a straight, uh, uh, revenue increase on our, for the utility payers.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just, again, my, always my question around franchise fees is it seems that we pull a number out of the air and I just looking for the math as to how we did it. See, to me, that makes sense. I mean, if they're changing their delivery kind of way and they're, and there's a, there's a rationale behind it, but Right now I don't, there's no rationale. I just don't know why we would do it without having some sort of a, a rationale behind it.
I don't think any of them have a rationale.
Yeah. And again, we, we didn't do the analysis, um, because again, we, we sort of brought it forward, maintaining the status quo. And so You know, as, as you're aware, franchise fee are a mechanism by which, you know, we recuperate the equivalent, right? For, for the, the infrastructure, right? If it was, it was taxing essentially. Um, and so that, that detailed analysis of X versus Y, right? What we could recuperate, but like, we, we haven't done that recently, um, to the best of my knowledge.
Yeah. And I mean, hence my question. I mean, there was nothing that changed. So why are we changing? That's kind of what I'm following.
I would just say economic circumstances outside of franchise fees and municipal budgeting and stuff, looking for revenue outside of property taxes. And Since I've been here, we've been just trying to keep it on the low end of the region. So we remain competitive. And now it seems like we're Quite low.
Sounds like a debate.
Sorry. Yeah. I was trying to answer your question, but I will go to Council Bermansky.
Thank you through the mayor. The comparables that in administration provided, you know, some of them were higher. And of course, medicine hat didn't have any, any amount. Is there Would you could extend the list and there'd be several that would be lower as well?
Uh, uh, through the chair to Council Bermansky. Uh, yes, that's correct. Um, the rates From, they range from zero to thirty five percent. Uh, and, uh, you know, On the high end, Red Deer is at thirty five percent. Uh, Spruce Grove is at thirty five percent. And then some municipalities do have, uh, They levy taxes on top of the franchise fee rate. So it's a little bit higher. Whereas St. Albert, we, uh, opt to Only levy the franchise fee.
Thank you.
I think, uh, Council Kilik has the full list and he might be able to share it later. He's hands up. So actually you're next, Council Kilik. So go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I, I did pull off the full list of the Atco fees, uh, Off their website. I did not make a copy of it, but I, I assume somebody else could Google it and, uh, as I did and, and Send it out to rest of council or even put it up as a slide if, if we wanted. Um, but my question is, I, I'm not clear as to, in addition to Um, the franchise fees that are listed and I, I just pick up Edmonton as an example. Their franchise fee is set at thirty five percent. Plus, I believe it says that they have an additional rider of three point seven percent. I, I really just don't understand what the, what the riders fee is, uh, for
Those other communities have riders as well?
Pardon?
Are there other communities that have a
Uh, yes. And, and for example, Legala has set a twenty five percent of franchise fee with a five percent Uh, rider, uh, on top of that. And Spruce Grove and Stony Plain, uh, while Spruce Grove at thirty five percent. Um, franchise fee with an additional one point seven rider on there. But I, I just don't understand what the, What the rider is and, and how is it applied?
Uh, so if I can just add a few comments there, uh, the franchise fee riders, there are a few different ones. So there's the rider B. Uh, that's the charge of the taxes where they charge Atco for taxes. And then there are additional costs that they may charge. So that's the rider B. And there are other riders as well. Um, And when it comes to Edmonton, I have been in contact with our, you know, Edmonton, uh, neighbor, um, and, uh, They, they calculate the franchise fees slightly different. And there is a consumption, uh, Factor included in their fee rate.
But we don't, we don't have a rider. Um, and, and what, what does the advantage or disadvantage of having An additional rider? You're, are we collecting more money from residents that offset taxes or is that an actual tax? Is that a tax amount?
So again, again, that would depend on the rider and it could be a tax.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
And, uh, sorry, I, if I could just ask Reagan, um, do you want, is there anything you would like to add?
I was just going to jump in exactly what you said, Monica. Uh, the, the rider A is the franchise fee and, and, and the rider B is the municipal taxes, uh, plus any other charges. And, uh, that's my interpretation as well as that Edmonton's at, uh, thirty eight point seven percent. And we are The, I think the third lowest in the region is, as I can, as far as I can tell, I think only Sherwood Park is slightly lower than us. And I don't have line of sight to what their taxes are because they're not listed. So, um, and Fort Saskatchewan is at zero percent for their franchise fee. And then they've got a three percent charge for, for the taxes. So they're well below Everybody else, uh, but for the other urban municipalities in the capital region that are, that are listed there. So Edmonton, Stony Plains, Bruce Grove, Gibbons and Legal As well as Bon Accord, uh, they're all higher than us. They range between twenty seven point four percent, thirty eight point seven percent. And Sherwood Park is at twenty two percent for their franchise fee. And I don't see municipal taxes listed. So I would, I would say we're quite comparable with Sherwood Park and we're actually below Sherwood Park currently.
Yeah. Uh, thank, thank you for the clarification. And it, it was just to illustrate that we are significantly lower When we compare ourselves in the region, both for our, um, uh, Franchise fee, and then when we add on the riders, it even pushes it higher. And, and we are significantly on the low end of the scale, even, um, Going forward with a potential increase. So I just, I just wanted to have that clarification. Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question on Marta? Cause we weren't really expecting franchise fee discussions today or changing it. This is just first reading. Can we just read first reading as is? And at second reading, make the amendment to the fee? Cause I feel like this council needs a, a little bit of time to get comfortable with this decision.
So I'll take a stab at this answer first. And I think maybe Monica will need to jump in because from a legislative perspective, yes, you can do that. This will be back for second and third reading sometime in early December is our projected timeline. However, I'm not sure with respect to the negotiation timeline, whether those franchise fees, if the amendment is made in December, whether that would be able to take effect for Jan one twenty five? Or if it would need to take effect Jan one twenty six. Um, so Monica, I don't know if from your negotiations with the Atco team, if you can maybe further provide some information about that.
Uh, thanks, Martha. Uh, so if council would like to change the franchise fee rate, uh, to take, and would like to receive the change Um, in January first, twenty twenty five, the change will have to occur today.
Okay.
Uh, so then we will need an amendment for, um, or the correct motion for the, the rate, uh, the rate change. Uh, however, if council, uh, liked some time to discuss the, the property rate, Then the rate change may not take effect on January first, twenty twenty five.
Okay. We can, I think we can model through it today. Um, Council Bermansky.
Thank you through the mayor to administration. Um, in consideration of different companies that provide these services, I know that it was mentioned at Alberta municipalities, you know, someone brings their Tech, their, uh, utility bill forward and they've used a small amount of the, you know, the product that they're buying, but there's all these extra charges on the bill. Uh, so the franchise fee, is that not calculated on all those charges? So you're paying that percentage of all the charges added together. Is that correct?
Okay, Council, yeah, I'll defer to you. Looks like Monica is going to respond. Thank you.
Uh, through Mayor Heron to Council Bermansky. So the franchise fee is calculated as percentage of delivery revenue. Uh, so that includes transmission and distribution charges. Uh, it does not include the cost of the commodity or the cost of the fuel.
Right. So some utilities would have like a lot more transmission and delivery charges than other companies, correct? So the percentage doesn't really make a difference.
I, I'm, I'm not clear on your question, Council Bermansky.
Yeah, I think you're, you're asking depending on who the, the supplier is or the transmitter, they might have
Yes, like some will have more transmission and then addition to the transmission and so on. Some, some I've seen have four and five charges and others will have a couple depending on where you live and Who you're paying it to. And then yet that percentage calculates on all those items.
Right. So perhaps between Monica and Reagan, they can
Yeah.
Take a stab at that.
So I, it, it's on the total delivery revenue. Um, and then each municipality, uh, Manages it differently. But, uh, you know, we have the franchise, uh, agreement that manages the natural gas distribution system, but, uh, With, uh, with Atco. Um, and I'll ask Reagan if you would like to add any commentary or not.
I, I guess the only thing on that is yes, the, the different natural gas companies would have different rates. Apex would have different rates. Um, and then there's the, uh, I think Devon has their own natural gas utility, um, and they, they have different rates as well. So, so it would depend on your utility. Um, what, uh, what those percentages would, would amount to in terms of dollars and cents.
Right. So the actual percentage of the charge isn't really accurate in comparisons then?
It's, it's not a true apples to apples, I guess, if you look at it from that respect, but we're looking, you know, the comparison that I'm doing and then what Council Kilik's pulling from is that those are all Atco customers. So they're all within the, within the capital region. So the, The distribution and transmission charges should be, should be comparable between, because those are all Atco serviced municipalities on that list.
Are they comparable but different as well? Because I mean, I've seen from several regions, they can be quite dramatically different. If you're a little bit rural or if you're, you know, depending on where you're located.
There can be differences and, and I think there are differences as Monica alluded to within the franchise agreements themselves, um, uh, because Ed- Edmonton has, has a consumption piece built into theirs. But I think Atco is moving to try and standardize, uh, these, these franchise fee agreements across municipalities so that Because I'm sure it must be difficult for them to administer slightly different rules in each municipality. They're trying to move to, to standardize that across their customers.
And for the, um, you know, the initial addition of franchise fees, um, is generally put forward, you know, to, I guess, Reduce taxes, but it's really essentially a, a hidden tax. Is that the main reason? Like in some municipalities for specific franchise fees, it would be for some infrastructure that you're working on, not just a, as a means of collecting money. Is, so can you, you can't do a comparison there either, what those franchise fees might be, you know, added for in specific communities as well, correct?
I can speak to that. So the main purpose of the franchise fee is to compensate for the loss of the taxable property. And in return for providing that company with access to municipal right away. So it's really that loss of taxation revenue for the city. So it's, that's not seen as, that's where it's the main purpose is not that it's for that, not for the
Right.
Purpose of the taxation.
So it can be quite complex then in, in, I think Diane wants to
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in just to kind of go back in. And we've had this franchise fee discussion before, but one of the other pieces you have to remember is that, um, not all utility payers are taxpayers.
Right.
Um, so it actually widens the base. So even though we're taking a hundred percent of the revenue because our budget and taxation guidance principles has a very clear component in it that says that all revenue that we collected franchise fees Will be used to offset municipal taxes. So we'll be getting revenue from non-taxable properties. That will be a hundred percent going to the taxpayer. And so it's really also to support a user pay philosophy. Um, that it's the utility payers that are, that are paying for Atco to, to have those rights away to, to be able to deliver the gas services as well.
So it's definitely complex. Yes.
Yeah. And, and through the chair, I'll just add one more thing. The, the other piece of value for, for Atco is that this is, this is basically granting the monopoly within the city of St. Albert. And it's hard to put a, hard to put a price tag on that or a value on that. Uh, but that, the franchise agreement grants them, they're the, they're the only natural gas distribution company within the city.
Right.
Otherwise, yeah. And with competition, then, uh, then it would, it would, the cost of infrastructure would be even more expensive for a customer if they're what you Competition is good in some ways, but when it comes to utilities like this, because they're so capital intensive, uh, it's, 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 it's not in the best interest of customers. So.
Right. You do need a provider. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. I see no more questions. My comments are all just comments, so I won't. Okay. Yeah. So I'll let you go ahead, Council Kilik.
Uh, I believe it's just going to be the, I'm not sure if I have to read everything that's on page eight eighty one. Council may elect. Right.
So we just have to do first reading first. That's, um, the first motion to get it on the floor. And then if we're going to be talking about the franchise fee Um, increase, that will be the following motion afterwards.
Okay. So you need The first, the recommended motion plus the alternative motion, which were the Xs.
Correct. So the first one will be just the recommended one. And then afterwards, in order to discuss the franchise fees today, we'll, we'll do the first of the next batch, um, to talk about the franchise fee.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That by law twenty two slash twenty twenty four being a bylaw to authorize a chief administrative Officer to execute an agreement with Atco Gas and Pipelines Limited to deliver natural gas to customers within the city of St. Albert be read a first time.
Okay. I will take that one as completely separate. Um, I don't know if you have any comments or debate on that one?
Uh, without a contract, we're, um, It, it, it actually ends, so we should continue to have a franchise fee contract and a, and an ex, this is an exclusive agreement With Atco to deliver gas to our residents and, uh, Signing this contract, my understanding, we actually have got a better contract, but with shorter terms than we originally started with, uh, in negotiations. So this is Uh, a contract that has been under negotiation with standard terms and agreements, uh, for quite some time. And it's a better deal for St. Albert in that, that it is actually a shorter term and would allow us to renegotiate it, um, quicker in the future if, if things, uh, change. So this is a good contract and Um, the, uh, CA should be able to proceed to, to sign off on it.
All right. Uh, see no more hands up. So I'll call for the vote on that one. Voting's closed and that motion passes unanimously. So now I think you read that section five of Schedule A, that one.
Okay. Thank you. That's section five of Schedule A of bylaw two slash twenty twenty four. Be amended to increase the franchise fee from twenty point three percent to twenty five percent.
Sorry, it's by law twenty two slash twenty twenty four. We had a typo.
Just say we only have two bylaws.
We need to fix that to make sure that's right. Yeah.
So the, the right one is two or twenty two? I'll reread it. Uh, that's section five of Schedule A of bylaw twenty two slash twenty twenty four be amended to increase the franchise fee from Twenty point three percent to twenty five percent.
All right. I'll accept that motion. Yeah, we don't need to do two and three until we've debated one. Okay. So, um, Question? Okay.
Uh, question to the mover. I just need to know why you a lot, rhyme, arrived at twenty five.
Uh, thank you, Council Mackay. Uh, the reason I came to twenty five is just when I looked at the Atco list of, uh, rider or, um, Franchise fee rates, uh, in their Schedule A, uh, benchmarked. And I'll, I'll, I'll just read them off Edmonton at thirty five percent, Red Deer at thirty five percent, Legala twenty five percent. Grand Perry twenty five percent, Sherwood Park twenty two percent, Spruce Grove thirty five percent, St. Albert sitting at twenty point three percent. St. Albert sitting at twenty point three percent, Stony Plain thirty-five percent, Wataskin thirty-three percent. When when I looked at that list, um, and I looked at ours sitting at twenty point three, what I always hear from residents is, why are my taxes so high? And the uh, comment is, is is other areas are lower because their franchise fees are significantly higher than St. Albert's. And that money that they collect through franchise fees, as I read off Edmonton at thirty-five, um, allows their taxes to be lower. So I did some very simple kind of averaging math and uh, came up with twenty twenty-five percent as a number to have in the uh, in the motion. If if anybody would like to suggest that it should be higher, I'd I'd certainly be open to that. Um, but I I did note that it would make a point five percent uh, decrease to our potential upcoming uh, tax uh, assessment as well. So I I I made it just because I want to make small incremental steps rather than, you know, quickly jump to thirty-five percent, wouldn't, I don't think would be would be correct.
So just follow-up question?
Yeah.
So it's just basically a a math, so um, kind of calculation versus you didn't have time to obviously contact other people and say, why is yours this high or why is it where it's at?
No, I I did not have the opportunity to contact other municipalities, although I do understand some municipalities actually have it in their bylaws that they max out at thirty-five percent, that they that they charge the full amount. So I I don't know if administration could speak to that, but uh, I do know that some actually have it as this, this should be maxed out at get in in collecting money from a company that we give exclusive rights, exclusive rights to provide service to our residents. Um, that's got to be worth something, so.
Okay, yeah, I I I don't have any follow-up questions, so my questions would come in my debate.
All right, uh. We are, we are on debate now.
Well, I have.
Okay, okay, oh, yeah, you haven't done opening arguments yet.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Killick, I'll go to you. Unless, Councilman, do you have a question or debate? Okay, go ahead.
So uh, on on debate, it it's quite, I I think I almost uh, answered all the questions with Councilman Mackay's question, so it's perfect lead in. Uh, as I said, what, when I hear from residents, why are our taxes so high? Um, they don't understand, nor should they. It's a it's a kind of a deep dive that we in council and administration will understand is that munis- other municipalities get revenue from other sources, i.e. franchise fees, to hold down their tax rate. And I would prefer to to increase our franchise fee so that we can decrease our taxes and or or hold them at a lower number. And by increasing to twenty-five percent, we're still well below um, what our neighbor neighboring communities are are set at. As I said, Stony Plain thirty-five percent, Spruce Grove, everybody can compares, you know, what's cheaper to live in Spruce Grove? Well, that's because their franchise fee is thirty-five percent. Or it's cheaper to live in Trumpeter or Starling just down the street. Well, that's because Edmonton's franchise fee is set at thirty-five percent. And they use that money to offset taxes. And this is a cleaner way to say, we're going to catch up a little bit incrementally over period of time. Now's the time to do it, we're we're opening, uh, we have this agreement and franchise fee open um, before us today. And this is a way to um, change that franchise fee at the same time, so. That's what I'm proposing and uh, I thought twenty-five percent was a a small increase, not jumping right up to the thirty-five percent that some of our uh, neighboring municipalities have. Plus, they have the additional riders, which actually makes the number higher that they're collecting from other other sources to to offset taxes.
All right, um, I will go to, I'm not sure what order, because I see not Counselor Jolly's hand up, but I'll go to Counselor Bermansky. That's a broadhead, Counselor Jolly.
Thank you through the mayor, um. Benchmark, that's an interesting word. Um, you never really know when all the calculations come to be, whether you got to that benchmark, you know, through successes or failures. And um, uh, I, you know, I see St. Albert as being successful at keeping that number, you know, number down. Um, it's often that, you know, the people do mention that why are taxes high? But I also have people saying to me, why are utilities so high? I can't pay my utilities. I can't pay taxes, I can't pay my utilities, but what's the difference, right? If the money is coming out of kind of coming out of somewhere, you're paying the bills of both at the end of the day. So the difficult part is just for me, um, picking a number out of the air and just for extra funds, right? It's essentially just a means of collecting extra funds and hope that those people can still, you know, citizens of the city can still afford those extra funds, really when we don't have a reason to do it just at this point. So it's prior to tax, um, you know, tax settlements or tax increases. And you're, I'm, you know, I'm torn on this because I don't, I don't see any difference between taxes and utility franchise fees. They're, they're essentially the same thing, they're coming out of the same pocket. And the thing is you utilities, people have to live, they have to have utilities, they have to heat their homes. They, there's, there's a plethora of franchise fees and extra fees and service fees added to utility bills already. And for us to increase that burden is very, very difficult for me to um, to propose, I propose out of the out of the air, I guess. That's my comment, I'm I'm not sure how I'm sitting.
Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and uh, thank you Colin, Sir Killick for bringing this forward. Quite honestly, I I remember the debate around the uh, electrical franchise fees and I'm not sure the wounds have have healed yet. But but nonetheless, the arguments as to why you would uh, even consider such a thing as a franchise fee or indeed uh, increase our franchise fees to to make the playing field of comparison between other municipalities in the region, uh. You need to do this in order so that there is this playing field of people understanding what it costs to to live in a particular municipality. And yeah, I I mean, the the kitchen table issues uh, in St. Albert are just as dire as they are in every other uh, community. But but in this particular case, when you start talking about uh, revenue from franchise fees, there's there's two things. Number one is the comparator, but it's also the, as uh, as Ingers or McMorty said earlier, it's it's the the pool of 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 people from which you you collect this this fee is sig, it it's larger than just your um, property tax rate payers. And and quite honestly, if if we don't make our franchise fee equal, what happens is is that the the tax burden is is substantially more or the difference is made up by our property tax rate payers. And so those who are uh, receiving services like gas or electricity are getting a reduction in the rate that they pay on the backs of the residential rate payer. And that to me is the most inequitable thing. And so everybody uh, uh, and and businesses and uh, schools and hospitals and churches and and uh, and uh, uh, municipal, or I mean provincial buildings, uh, given that our G-Pot uh, program is is defunct, uh, they don't have to pay property taxes. But how do you, how do you consider that they also receive services that that are are within our community? And so I see in one way that they can contribute to uh, reducing the rate uh, uh, burden for everybody within our community is to uh, is to pay some of these franchise fees just like everybody else. So I, you know, the the uh, the whole idea of who should pay property tax, that's a whole different conversation. But about balancing the burden about uh, uh, the cost it is to run a city, I think uh, franchise fees allows us to uh, to level the playing field at least a little bit. Now, of course, the uh, the caveat here is that you actually use the money that you uh, you know, you receive from this increase to reduce the amount of taxes on the uh, property tax rate payer. And I'm assuming that's how this is going to play out in the end, so. Uh, I cert- you certainly have my support, uh, Councilman Killick on this. Uh, twenty-five percent uh, seems to be a reasonable starting point here. Um, you know, it's a complex issue and whether you could say to the, you know, fifth decimal point that this is a, you know, a uh, even comparison from municipality to municipality, I I don't know whether that could be true. But on the uh, on the overall, I think this is a a reasonable start. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Jolly.
Thank you, um, so I I agree with Counselor Bermansky that twenty-five percent is an arbitrary number. Uh, but we really have to start somewhere. I I agree with all of Counselor Broadhead's points, um. Franchise fees help offset taxes and they benefit taxpayers because it captures provincial buildings and and other landowners that don't pay taxes. Um, Counsel Broadhead mentioned those ransom lieu taxes, they've been slashed in the last few years, so um, we need to take actions that protect rate payers where we can. And this is one of the levers we have, we don't have many choices as municipalities in terms of how how to um, kind of impact revenues, but this is one of them. Um, so I'm I'm supportive of this of this change, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hughes.
Well, we can already see which way this is going, so I'll be really brief. Uh, just first of all, twenty-five, a five percent increase is a twenty-five percent increase to the total taxes that we're charging through the franchise fee. It's not a small amount. If I told you I'm charging you twenty-five percent more, it's not a small amount, it's looking at about fifty dollars more per household uh, to heat their homes. And this is being passed directly onto the user, so this is, but this is not to the organization, this is just to the user, they're just a flow-through. So it I know that every time that we get an opportunity to raise uh, franchise fees that I've been on council, the council of the day chooses to do it. And uh, it's not noble, it's just simply a way to to make it look like our taxes are lower when they're not. And the reality is that our taxes are higher than other regions. And it's not because of the franchise fees, it's because our taxes are higher than the regions. So we can raise it to whatever number you want. At the end of the day, we will then just have high franchise fees and high taxes. But this is not going to offset it where they go, oh, you know what, now you're the same as Spruce Grove, or now you're the same as Edmonton, nope. We are going to still be substantially higher than at both those communities, people pay, here they come, they realize it's the cost they came to pay is these higher taxes here. Uh, but pretending that this is somehow going to level the playing field is to just eluding ourselves. Because the reality is that when you do not try to simply put additional fees in place and you have to work on the tax numbers and be accountable with tax numbers, what you focus on can then start being reduced. But if you say, oh, actually, it's only a six percent tax increase, not a seven, because we've just put seven, put a one percent hidden in another bill that you're going to have to pay at the end of the month anyway, uh, then there's less accountability, quite frankly, to make the taxes go down. So unless some less of an onus, because we can just say, oh, no, no, it didn't count, the franchise fee didn't count, it counts. It makes life less affordable to live here. And at the end of the day, what we will have unfortunately is we will have a higher tax franchise fee and we will still have high taxes. And when people come and say, why do we have high taxes? Well, I guess you can't say it's because the franchise fees, because we're going to be right up there with them. That's it, thank you.
Counselor Mackay, you're up next.
Yeah, thanks. My, uh, first of all, I want to begin my comments by saying thank you to administration for a very well uh, researched and written um, background report, I appreciated the information and and uh, and I actually appreciated your recommendation and I was uh, quite happy with going forward because I mean, you've identified that um, uh, the kind of the budget impacts and and also the projected revenue. And it's based on on um, on actual numbers. Um, so, I I mean, I'm being as somebody that's somewhat evidence-based, I would, I've always struggled with how we arbitrarily arrive at a number. And I think that administration has done some background research and has looked at what are the impacts and as it relates to um, uh, the budget twenty twenty-five. And they didn't come in with any uh, recommendation for councils to uh, change what the current um, franchise fees is for natural gas. So I I just, to me, this just seems like we're just doing it by this kind of the the seat of our pants without uh, a really enough of a of a backgrounder in relation to support a four point seven percent increase. And and I just find that challenging for me to accept. I mean, if we if we had sent it back to administration to do some back more background research, they may have um, they may not have been able to uh, get the information, but at least we would have had some more um, uh, background into a a number. So I I I can't, I just, I just can't support something that we just change because um, it looks like that's, it's just a uh, an average of what's in the region. I think we there just needed to be a little bit more research by administration to make me more comfortable in supporting this.
Counselor Mackay, you're consistent. And I I hate to say it, but you're never going to be satisfied, I think, with these franchise fee numbers, looking for data, they're generally always arbitrary. I apologize that you're always, you're tossing and turning in bed, um. My comments are, the backgrounder was really good. It talked about how an average consumption in St. Albert is a hundred fifteen gigajoules or nine seven six per month. So a increase to the franchise fee would probably be two bucks a month, something like that. Um. Maybe, yeah, but it goes to the broader conversation that um, Counsel Broadhead used and Mrs. McMorty stole earlier and Counsel Jolly, uh. This is not a hidden tax in any way, shape or form. Franchise fees, municipal franchise fees are on your utility bill. And we have a policy that says exactly where they go to um, offset taxes. Uh, this is definitely not increasing the burden on the residents of St. Albert. For those of you stuck around a while, long time, there was a report done by the our staff years ago saying if you increase franchise fees, the offset in taxes is greater than what you will pay on your utility bill. So this helps taxpayers, not burdens them. Um, it's, it's already been said, it spreads the municipalities are limited so severely in how they collect revenue and that property taxes are the worst regressive form of um, taxation there is. Um, utility franchise fees are somewhat of a user fee, they are, they're very regulated in public, um, and they apply to everyone. So, you know, I feel like our hands are tied all the time and and the municipal or the province keeps downloading. As Counsel Jolly pointed out with the G-Pot as a one example of many, um. This is an opportunity and the opportunity is now, when we're doing the agreement with Atco uh, to uh, level at least in the region, because we're all served by Atco. And you're a hundred percent right, Counsel Killick, when I have to defend a tax increase to a resident and they say, well, Spruce Grove and Shored Park didn't go up that way that much. This is only a small reason why, but it is a reason why, because they they use every tool in their toolbox, especially Spruce Grove and Edmonton when they have it set at thirty-five percent. They care that their rate pair or their taxpayers pay the least amount of property taxes, so they use the tool to its fullest. That's the way I see it. But I also see that if we're attracting businesses, we need to be competitive. So we can always say our franchise fees are comparatively low in the region if we have a big gas user coming into town. So it's it's not, it's never easy, but I think it's our responsibility to to pull the 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 levers that we have available, so I'll let you close.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, just to say that um, Counsel Broadhead and the mayor um, probably made my closing arguments far more articulate.
Probably made my closing arguments far more articulate than, than I could have. Um. And thi- this is just one step in. Bringing things more into alignment. So, um, again, when I. Looked at the list and I know Counselor Makkai pulled it up, uh. And saw what others are, are paying in the region, and that's what we always get compared to. Um, so I, I took a, a low end of the average, um, to at least start the conversation. And, uh, I'm hopeful that council will support the proposed twenty-five percent.
I will call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes with Counsel Vermansky, Hughes and Makkai opposed. Now we have a couple actually other motions. I've got to go back to that page to, uh, that note, we have to give notice. And then the administration execute and complete all required documentation. All right, Counsel Kilik, there's two more motions. On page one, eight, eight, one. Cause we, so the, that notice be provided to ACO no later than October first. Of the city's intent to raise, that's why we had to do it today. So we get on the emails right now. No later than October first. Do you still want that date in there?
Yes, we need that date, yeah.
Page eight, eight, one. Number two. It's on the screen. And you can read those two together, I would say.
That, uh, by law, twenty-four dash zero thirty. Oh, mo- the motion? Uh, that notice be provided, sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That notice be provided to ACO Gas and Pipeline Limited to no later than October first, twenty twenty-four. The city's intent to increase the franchise fee effective January one, twenty twenty-five. That administration execute and complete all required documentation and advertising requirements to enable consideration. Of approval of the franchise fee increased by the Alberta Utilities Commission.
All right, anything on that one? You're good?
I, I think debate has all been good and you've arrived at, at the right path forward.
Yeah, I think these last two motions are housekeeping. Yeah. Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes by majority with Vermansky and Hughes opposed. Okay, um. That's the end of nine point four from my understanding. And then we have, uh, eleven point one. Uh, which is Counsel Kilik's notice of motion. So let's quickly do the wave of notice first and then we'll get into the meat of it all. So.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. That the following notice of motion be debated at the October first, twenty twenty-four regular. Meeting of council and that's a twenty-day notice period requirement in section one-one-nine. Dash nine of the procedure by law be waived.
Okay. Do you have any opening comments on waiving notice? It has to be majority.
So just, just to say that, um.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, two thirds.
Yes, special resolution required, so two thirds.
Right, thank you. I feel like it should be, but our policy says super. Just sounds fun. Go ahead, sorry.
So, uh, first, first off, um, by way of, of bringing this forward this quickly, uh. Is driven purely by the requirement to have bids sent in. If, if we choose to go that route, uh, by October eighteenth. I only became aware of this on Friday of last week. Um, it was published in the Gazette, this notice of a, of a. Uh, receivership sale of land. So as soon as I saw it on Friday. Um, I asked that this be brought forward, uh, and I issued the paperwork on, on the same day, Friday. Uh, unfortunately, the situation is that the receiver has set the date for, uh. RFP or bids to be sent in by October eighteenth. So, uh, it, for us even to consider doing this. Required us to, uh, waiving the twenty-day notice period.
Any, oh, Counsel Jolly, you have comments on waiving notice?
Yeah, I'm just voting against this. I, you know, I think if it's something that is urgent, the mayor could absolutely, um, call a special meeting of council. And then we would be able to notice the, notify the public that, that we're having this discussion.
So you're voting again, you're opposed to waiving? Okay. Any other com- oh, Counsel Makkai?
Yeah, and I, I don't know whether this is appropriate time to ask it, so please cut me off.
Yeah, okay.
I, I just.
Gladly.
Don't hurt me. Um, I, I get, I, I mean, part of me would. I just don't know whether we have, if administration's had enough time to have, have a frank, full and frank discussion on this. And I think you, I mean, it kind of goes to what Counsel Jolly just raised. Um, because, I mean. I just don't, I just.
Yeah.
Know if, if we have the time or I, or the background or the information. To be able to make a proper decision, even if we allow this to go forward.
So.
Should we, should we, should we, yeah, I know, that's kind of where I'm thinking, so. But I'm kind of hot between what Counsel Jolly just said and then allowing. Administration to have the time, so maybe there.
Would be the latest date we could make this decision? Like, court. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, we'd have to look at when the, the date closes, but, um, you know. Suffice to say, there's more work to be done if you want a fulsome recommendation or fulsome.
So if we don't waive notice. We could still debate this because he's given notice in three weeks.
S- sorry, so just so we're clear, the, the date closes on October eighteenth. Our next council meeting is October fifteenth. Given when notice of this was given, which is Friday afternoon, even October fifteenth, it still does not meet the three-week. The twenty-day requirement. So even on the fifteenth, we would have to have a vote about whether notice would be.
I'm just wondering if we could. Move the wave of notice. It's currently reads that the following notice of motion be debated October first. Would you be okay with debating in October fifteenth to give staff a little bit more time? Is that still before the land thing?
It is, I, I, we'd have to decide. I can't guarantee you that we'd have the offer completely ready and through legal review by then.
Right, because so if it, if it was approved October fifteenth and it closes on October eighteenth, we'll have to work through an appraisal process. And to make sure all of our policies are met, so that might not, or it might, but it might not be.
You'd rather have it done today. Okay, okay.
The, the way I worded this was to bring it forward as soon as and as quickly as possible. To give administration time, as much time to do their background research and then bring that research. In the second motion, uh, back on October fifteenth and give council an update. That would. That's why I specifically phased the two, uh, motions in the, the way I did.
Okay.
Le- leaving it to the fifteenth was, we don't, would give people only three days. Essentially.
Okay.
To, well, two days to do the work and then one day to actually get a bid in, if, if it was approved.
Should bring, I should have brought this up, sorry. That's Counsel Jolly's and then.
I, I just offered, this is a fairly significant amount of work for appraisals and a number of other things. So our, our preference would be to have direction that this is something you want us to do, right? And there's a reason to do it.
Okay. All right, we're still in debate on waving, so I, I'm just getting questions answered. I'm not entering into debate at all. So I've heard from Counsel Jolly and Counsel Makkai, anyone else on waving notice? Okay, I'm going to call for the, do you have anything to close?
All right.
Oh, go ahead, yeah. The motion is that administration make an offer to purchase the lands legally described as. For a fair market value to be funded from municipal land and facilities reserved and according with policies. Uh, and that administration provide a verbal update to council at the October fifteenth meeting. Mayor, sorry, can Counsel Broadhead turn on? Counsel Jolly, Counsel, oh, your mic's not on.
Oh, I'm my.
Sorry, Counsel Jolly, yeah.
It just seems that the, the, that the motion. Is, is backwards. I'd, I'd like to make the decision on the purchase on the fifteenth in, in light of the information. That would come forward rather than do the information and then ask for information.
I don't know if administration can do that. Do they got nothing? Do you have anything today?
We, we've got an indicative cost based on an old, uh, but nothing substantial, or, or I guess, nothing. I defer to Steve Bannerman, um, but no, we can't unequivocally, kind of unequivocal, that's the word I was looking for, sorry.
You wouldn't want to do that in public, would you? No.
The, the way I.
I can't take away your right to do this wave of notice motion. I'm just trying to think our way through this.
But I was just going to say, it was my understanding that. To waive notification so that we could give guidance to administration to do the work, to prepare.
Well, you, okay, so you might need to reword your second motion. Cause your second motion says that administration make an offer. So I don't know if anyone's ready to make that motion today. So we could waive the notice of motion today to have a conversation. About that. And I'm feeling, do you want, do, do we need to go into camera for any of this? Feel like we.
Well, I, I think if we start talking about costs and, and, you know, potential bargaining, then I would recommend going into.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah. I noticed that Mike Erickson just popped into the Zoom too, so.
We might need a motion in public though, after in camera as well.
Hundred percent, yeah. Can I, but why don't counsel, why don't we give Counsel Kilik the benefit of the doubt? Because now I'm into debate. Waive notice and we'll go on camera to have a quick conversation about what we're. What we're talking about and what the appropriate motion coming out of council. Or out of camera would be, it might not be to make a purchase, right?
Mayor, may I suggest that we just go in camera right now and have the, just a discussion?
We have to waive the notice. This is a notice of motion section. Until we waive the notice, we can't talk about it.
Cause the challenge I'm having right now is that. If we don't decide it today, basically the staff are not going to have their directions, what they need to do, and they can't do it, turn around in a dime, and this is already a dime, really, quite frankly. Um, but at the same time, I don't really know if we can get that information in time. We're basically debating things blind. And so I, I, yeah.
But just a point of order.
Point of order, go.
Yeah, well, I mean, we were basically having the whole discussion on, on the motion, um, that.
No, I think we were.
I know, to wave, I mean, and so, uh, I mean, we could waive the motion and then go in camera and have that discussion and then come.
Yeah, and then we don't have to make any motion. We can make a completely different motion.
Yeah, totally.
So I'm going to call the vote on waiving notice of motion because I see no more hands up. Call in the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes with. Oh, it didn't pass, so it's a, it.
So we need.
Majority, but not super majority.
Right, we need five to, to go forward, so we cannot go forward with this notice of motion today.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Um, that made that fast. We now. Are going in camera for the CAO.
Excuse me, Mayor, sorry, we just.
No, we have, we have to read some notice of motions and, that's right. So Counsel Jolly, I know you have one.
I do, um, it's just going to take me a second. It looks like we just got like twenty emails during the email or during the meeting.
It's all from the same person.
Yeah, I'm just looking, it's like eight twelve this morning. I got an email from Ledge. So my motion is that the city of St. Albert provide notice that it's withdrawing from Edmonton Global. And that this decision be presented to council in Q one or Q two, twenty twenty-six to allow for reconsideration prior to withdrawal.
Okay, so that's read in, and then I feel like Counsel Hughes just sent one in today.
It is that beginning in twenty twenty-five, administration present to council an annual fire services report similar to the applicable areas. In, I have a couple extra words here, but similar to applicable areas in the Spruce Grove Annual Protective Services Report.
Okay, and then. Please read that in today, got that. Okay, and then. That's it? Is that it for notice motions? Okay. Okay, now we can go to. Straight in camera. Unless there's any IRs you guys want to read in or that you haven't mentioned or any announcements.
I'd like to make a couple of announcements.
Go ahead.
Uh, please, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I'd just like, um. To recognize. Administration and for all their hard work that they did on the annual, uh, Clean and Green River Fest. I'd, I'd also like to provide recognition to TD for their sponsorship of that event. Uh, I think. TD's support of that and other tree planting initiatives in the city. Um, often goes unrecognized, but they have been supporting Clean and Green River Fest for a number of years. I'd also like to recognize the other sponsors that made that event so great. Um. In particular, St. Albert Mall always does a great job in, in cooking up their hot dogs and drinks and chips and, and everything else. And this year, uh, they were, uh, kind of, kind of sold out because. The reason they were sold out is because we had a record number of volunteers, um, participating in that. I think it was like fifty percent more, uh, than, than what we had in, in previous years. Um, as, and it, the event just gets bigger and better. Um, there's a tremendous amount of work by. Done by Public Works to have the, the boom truck there, the water truck, the. The dirt and malt truck, uh, all, all of those groups, Wreck and Parks was there. Um, again, stewarding all the volun- and they had a number of volunteers helping out, uh, register people. Handing out all the bags and the, uh, pickup tongs and gloves and all of that. Uh, and in our environmental team as well, did an awesome job, uh, coordinating that event. So just, uh, a, a really good event for our, for residents and it was a beautiful day. Um, for, for that, so. Uh, hats off to all of the, uh, the internal staff that were involved in, in that. Also, just recognition of yesterday, uh, September thirtieth, National Day of Truth and Reconciliation. Uh, it was great to see the full executive team out supporting that event. Uh, lots of hard work went into the, the organizing and setup of it. Public Works again, um. And our Indigenous relations did a, did a tremendous job. So, uh, hats off to everyone that was involved in that. Um, and, uh, uh, again, a, a little bit of a cooler day, but still a great event. And, uh, it, it should be noted that this, this is really, uh. Not, not only, uh, reconciliation, but it's reconcili action that was taken by the city to put that event. Or work at that event and support it. And, uh, that, that should go, uh. With recognition to the full team that participated. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that, Counsel Kilik. It was nice to see everybody out yesterday. Counsel Makkai?
Yeah, just on that note, uh, I have, it was a signif- significant day, uh, for Aero Utilities yesterday. As well as the Enoch Cree Nation. Um, as I had indicated to council before in one of my updates, that we were looking at negotiating. With Enoch Cree Nation around, uh, creating a partnership or at least signing a memorandum of understanding between Aero Utilities. And Enoch, and that happened yesterday, and it was significant that, that it happened.
That's the sign. Time to go home.
Didn't know I had that much pull. Anyways, uh, that. Anyways, I, I don't know who's doing that, but I'll keep on going. So, um, it's just, anyways, it's, it's about laying the foundation. Uh, for growth and long-term sustainability, uh, for Enoch. Uh, it basically will enable them to access the water. Uh, pardon me, wastewater treatment services needed in their community to support future economic, uh, and development growth. And right now, the goal. And right now, the goal is for Enoch to become a customer, which will mean uh, financial benefits to uh, all the municipalities belonging to the Wastewater Commission, because of course, that's just another uh, 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 financial benefit to us. And uh, goes a long way to stabilizing our rates. But their ultimate goal is is potential membership as the fourteenth member of uh, Aero Utilities. So that had happened yesterday was quite significant. It was, there was about a hundred and fifty people in attendance. Um, Enoch brought out their uh, chief elders, honor drums and dancers and um, it was uh, it was a quite the day, quite a significant day, actually. So I'm very happy to be participate in it. Got into a signing ceremony even. Used a big pen.
You sent me a very good picture of the whole day. Anyone else have any uh, announcements? Okay, can I have a motion? To go in camera for our CAO dialogue. Counsel Kilik, thank you.
The council moved in camera to have a confidential dialogue with the Chief Administrative Officer pursuant to section twenty four, one A of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Call for the vote. Sorry, voting's closed. Did I miss it? There we go. Unanimous. All right, we'll see you in camera.